Well, we know who's not on vacation. Listen, thank you all for coming this evening. Just for protocol purposes.
Reporting in progress.
Just for protocol purposes, just to let you know what's going to transpire. Then we'll actually call the meeting to order and have the pledge and all the rest. What we're going to do is try and move things around a little bit on the agenda to take this presentation up front, but we'll have to get the acquiescence of the Hippocare Ale and Brewery and Kitchen. They have a showcase hearing at 7:30 on that first, so if they're willing to do that, we'll take that out. If they can't make it and they have attorneys here and all the rest present and want to do it at 7:30, we have to abide by that because that's what we posted, but I will ask them to do that. And then I will have Mrs. Manzilli's presentation made, and then we'll have public comment. All right? So we'll attempt to do that. But before we do that, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask everybody to rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, I think the microphone is more for NORCAM than this room, correct?
You should pull it up. It should project you.
All right. So, and again, just before we get into it, just for public information purposes, I just want to make a brief announcement and offer our condolences since our last meeting. Andrea Mills passed away. Andrea is the wife of Finance Committee Member Dan Mills, mother of Kyle, Lindsay, Dylan, and Brady. Untimely passing, extremely unfortunate. She was a registered nurse at Beth Israel Hospital in the Medical Surgical Unit, and then with mums-to-be experiencing complex pregnancies. Just a wonderful woman, engaged member of the community, wonderful mother and husband, excuse me, wife to her husband. And again, we just wanted to let the family know that the community is surrounding them with love and support, and that the family has asked that contributions be made in her name to the North Reading High School Maskers Club, so to support performing arts. So we'd just like to offer our condolences to Dan and Kyle and Lindsay and Dylan and Brady, and the community is thinking of her. We appreciate her willingness to share Dan with us as a member of the Finance Committee and all of her contributions in supporting her children's activities now, asking us to contribute to the Maskers Club and the Performing Arts in North Reading. So with that, thank you very much. So now, do we have representatives from Hippocare Ales with us? And if you're, I see Mr. Dietz online. If you're here on behalf of Hippocare, excuse me, I'll ask you to unmute. Jimmy, you there?
I'm here.
Jim, I was wondering if you could accommodate us this evening just for a brief few minutes so that these people could voice their opinions on it. First, listen to a presentation by the Director of Elder Affairs, and then voice whatever opinions they may have to us, and then we'll get into your matter, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you. So with that, we're going to go to Agenda Item Number... Where are we?
Nine.
Number nine, Council on Aging Update. Hi. Hi. Thank you for being with us.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Sure. Why don't you just introduce yourself to...
That's on my agenda.
Introduce yourself to everybody here.
Is this better? Is this better?
Yes.
My outside voice. Does that work?
There you go, Valerie.
All right. I'm Italian. I can definitely hear.
Use the Italian.
Okay. Good evening, North Reading Select Board. I am Valerie Sceavoni. Oh, my gosh, seriously?
You may have to talk like...
Right into it like this.
Right into it like that?
Right into it like this, yes.
Very close.
I'll try one more time. Is this better? All right. Good evening, North Reading Select Board. I am Valerie Sceavoni, Chair of the North Reading Council on Aging. I have lived in North Reading for 26 years and have been a member of the council for three years. Thank you for making time on your agenda for this council presentation, and thank you, North Reading, for this massive turnout. This is awesome. Thank you. We'll ask just to save any questions to be addressed at the end of the presentation. Before we get into the presentation, I'd like to just take a moment to allow the current members of the North Reading Council on Aging to introduce themselves.
I'm Lisa DeTrappino. I'm a registered marriage retire. I've been on the council for three years.
Any other members present?
I'm Maxine Person from Martin's Landing. I've been in North Reading for about four years and have been on the council for three years.
I'm Barbara Campbell. I've been a homeowner in North Reading for 25 years, and this is my first year on the COA.
Hi. I'm Maria Damiano. My family and I, my husband and I, have lived in North Reading for 35 years. We've raised our children here. My husband's been a teacher in town, so knows many of your children as well, who are now growing up and serving the community. This is my first year. I'm the newbie. This is my first year on the council.
Linda?
Hi. My name is Lynda Corr. I've been a resident here with my husband and family for 32 years. I recently retired from senior care housing and decided to join the board and was fortunate enough to become a member of it. So I just started back in December.
Raphael here?
Oh, Raphael.
Good timing.
I thought we were later on.
No, we're now.
You got the memo. I just made it. I'm Rafael Shapiro. And I've lived in town about two years. I've been on the committee this year, and I've been blown away what they do with very little resources and very little people, and we need this committee and we need this project, so.
And your background?
Pardon?
Your background?
My background, okay.
Just brief.
Briefly.
Don't mean to be disrespectful.
I'm a retired surgeon. I still do a lot of international mission work. I travel around the world. I've operated about 12 different countries, and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Again, we appreciate all that the Council on Aging is doing, has done in the past, but is doing, to assist our programming here in North Reading. And your volunteerism is greatly appreciated, and Mr. Damiano's Chicken Broccoli Ziti is unbelievable. We still have it at home. Yes, indeed. Shout out to Nick. With that, go ahead. Thank you.
So I'm not going to read the slides. I just have some commentary on each one. It's important to highlight here that the services provided by the senior center should be considered as they're acting in a public safety role. Many of the services support the health and well-being of our senior community. It is through this lens that elder services should be viewed. For example, recall last year when there was a fire at the residential building on Hayrow Street that displaced four senior members of our community. The North Reading Fire Department called Kim to ask for help on behalf of these residents that just lost their home and did not know where to look for help. The staff at the center spent months after the fire to provide support and assistance in finding new homes.
Sorry about that. Techno, it's not advancing.
Try to share it again.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Slide show. Just want to advance. Screen three.
It's going out to Zoom, but not on the screen here.
There we go.
Let me take just a minute to load that.
Okay. And then I should be able to advance stuff. There we go. That's weird.
You just go ahead. I'm going to share from my...
Okay.
Take the most and click on the side, on the pages.
No, we were. It wasn't advancing.
It wasn't.
Yeah, it wasn't advancing. Yeah. So he'll advance. Tech is going that way.
Is it not going now?
No, not on here. I mean, we can without the presentation.
Yeah, well, we have some technical difficulties here. I'm going to call on Rich Wallner, a select board member, to just remind people of an important fact.
Yeah. So if you, and if it's not you, and it's someone of your neighbors who are 65 or older, we have a CB match, Mass Circuit Breaker Match Program in place. The deadline to apply is August 1st, and so if you, in your taxes, you qualify for the Massachusetts Circuit Breaker, more than likely, you're going to be able to get up to a 50% match from the town, but you have to apply to get it. So I'm encouraging to come down before August 1st, because if you miss this year, you have to wait another year to get it. So please take advantage. Gail Manning and I are on the Tax Aid Committee, and we're trying to get the word out as much as we can, but we haven't had a great response. And we believe in town in 2023, 400 people received the Massachusetts Circuit Breaker Match. We've only had 10 people apply, so that's a big gap, and I don't understand why people are not coming out to apply for it, but if it's you, please, please do. Yes, sir?
I came down to apply, and nobody knew anything about me.
To the assessor?
Because they basically told me, "Wait, do you hear something?"
To the assessor? Please come back to the assessor's office and speak to Deb Carbone or Mary Ann McKay.
That's where I was. And then I didn't know nothing about it.
I don't understand that. That should not have been.
I had the same experience.
Yeah.
That's two of us.
You went down and nobody knew about it?
Nobody knew about it.
Okay. Please go back down again and tell them to speak to either Mary Ann McKay or Deb Carbone. Okay.
There are actually forms that they give you in the tax office to allow you to see if you qualify for the cause of grade.
You should have at least gotten the form.
There should be forms right on the counters, last I heard. Yeah. Either way, please.
The administration will follow up tomorrow morning to ensure that people are well-informed down there, so that when you come in, they'll be able to assist.
Thank you for telling us. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. Thank you, Rich.
You all set, Michael?
Yeah.
All right. Very good. Get back on.
Okay. This slide highlights the past efforts by the town in response to the H-Friendly Community Needs Assessment that was completed in 2021. Just to address the last bullet point, and with all due respect, these approaches are Band-Aid responses to a much larger issue. A long-term solution is needed.
I should be able to. Okay.
Our Town in Numbers. More than a quarter of the town's population is 60 years of age and older and is anticipated to increase to 35% in the next five years. Active participants at the center have more than doubled since 2022. This is in response to more knowledge about the services offered by the senior center, and it should be noted, it is also due to the heroic efforts by Kim and her staff to make the center a welcoming, inclusive, and safe space. Please note, it is anticipated that Martin's Landing will bring more participants when Building Nine is finalized. Displayed in graphic form, you can see the increase in participation by activity type. Medical transportation, that is managed and overseen by the senior center, is supported by volunteer drivers. Management of rides takes a long time, and this service is in large part for our seniors. There are others in the community that also utilize this service. Due to economic changes as well as individual increased needs as they age, some of our residents face financial constraints and housing and food insecurity. They turn to the senior center for help. Our Footprint Across Town. At the top of the slide are listed the inadequacies of this current location. In response to increased growth and need, four temporary locations were identified. These are supported by grant funding or by an anonymous donor in the case of the Masonic Lodge. These four temporary locations require additional oversight by the center staff as they are not under direct control of the senior center. The monumental efforts to manage programming and staffing at four separate locations, in addition to the current location, take staff away from the services noted in the earlier slide. In this current configuration, the senior center is not going to be able to efficiently meet the growing needs of our residents. Speaking of grant funding, Kim was notified at the end of June by the Massachusetts Council on Aging that the center's grant funding application was denied. This funding supports space expansion, which was noted on the previous slide, and the outreach to our older adult community. It should be noted that the town budget for our seniors is half of 1% of the town's total budget. The residents 60 years of age and older represent more than a quarter of the town's population. The immediate ask to the select board is to find funding for the gap of $9,800, which is shown here, that the grant was to provide. And moving forward, the council is asking for the select board to provide plans and a timeline for a community center that can service our town and that should prioritize supporting our senior residents. Thank you for your time.
Kim, just during the budgetary process, I think we were talking about 25% of your budget is grant-related funding, approximately. Is that what it was, if I recall correctly?
Yep, that's correct.
And that was, that included the $9,800 at the time, because you didn't know that you weren't going to get the funding.
That's correct.
Yeah, so this is a substantial hit in relation to current programming.
Right.
And was not, the information was not available to us from the state.
Until June 24th.
Until June 24th, which is well after the annual town meeting. In addition to that, they stated that the availability of funds was limited because of federal funds, which were being cut back also?
Federal, federal and state funding has been more limited this year, and they had an increase in grant requests this year. So we were awarded these grants in fiscal '24 and '25, but we're not awarded for this year, so.
So just as, again, a little bit of background, the state does rely upon federal funding in order to support the grant, the state's grant funding to local communities.
Right.
And that that's been impaired, along with an increase in demand, not just in North Reading, but in other communities across the Commonwealth, as we all age, including myself.
That's right.
I was once his age, and my mother was my age, and now I'm her age. So it's all happening, yeah. So with that, I mean, I don't know if the administration at this particular point has any game plan in relation to how we can, are we talking about going to October Town Meeting to ask for available, something from available funds moving forward? And timing-wise, how critical is this $9,800? Do you have any flexibility to get us to October Town Meeting?
So right now, we're funded with town funding for one day a week at Aldersgate Church from September until May, and that day is typically Mondays. And then we have enough funding because of Monday holidays and such that we can fund one day a week through December 9th. That's for space use. We also broke down that grant request for funding for hospitality, you know, to provide supplies for events, marketing, and honorarium speakers and entertainers.
Do we have any other appropriated funds for those same functions, or was it all funded through the grant?
For this particular plan, it would be through the grant.
Okay.
That was denied because our formula grant funds that we rely on to supplement programming is used for salaries mostly, and we use some limited funds for programming.
The programming, I'm talking about the honorarium and other things that you just mentioned.
I don't have other...
There are other available funds through raise and appropriate, through taxation, to cover those?
To charge for, charge for programs? Is that what you, to charge for...
I'm just wondering, you know, do we have enough money appropriated as of June Town Meeting and as of July 1st to carry us through, well, your normal programming until we get to October Town Meeting? Or are we at a point where things are going to cease right now immediately because all the funding, all the funding for specific programming and things were through the grants only?
Right. So certain things, we will, if we have rent space, we have some programs that are funded through the Friends of the Council on Aging, and those programs will be held at Aldersgate Church, and we're trying to figure out where we would put them if we didn't have the Tuesday available on a long-term basis. So we can keep things as level-funded through December 9th, possibly, with the funding that we have.
So that's encouraging.
We ask through in-kind donations, you know, we ask for partnerships, which we have many, but through December 9th is probably a solid...
And again, this is a good time to shout out to the Friends of the Council on Aging and everybody else who supports your programming and allows for the kind of level of services that we enjoy to be offered.
Right.
And again, as much as we'd like to expand things moving forward, well, it takes its money, right?
Right.
Yeah. It takes its money. And again, we have a very generous community who's been very supportive over the last decades, but even more so recently.
Right.
You've done a fantastic job of the outreach and as far as visibility, and it shows in the numbers also. So it's not just the need, it's also the programming and the outreach that you've done. So the reason for my question was, you know, do we have time to get to October Town Meeting to plug the whole...
We prefer not to, however. We could continue current programming through December 9th.
And again, the other reason I ask is, you know, was this unforeseen? I mean, we knew that the grant money was always, wish women a maybe, but we counted on it, and so potentially, you know, you could look at a reserve fund transfer, we could make a case for it. But again, if we don't have to, and we can go to October Town Meeting and find other sources to do it, as revenue projections play out and costs escalate, again, we have other things happen throughout the community.
Right.
Some of you may be aware, it's our online or on the newspaper, that, you know, like the elevator at the library isn't working.
Right.
And that was totally unforeseen, and the costs associated with getting that functioning again probably exceeds what we have in the reserve fund in total. So we have other issues that are arising, and we're only three weeks into the new fiscal year that are going to have to be addressed along with this one here. That's why my question was, do we have some time here?
A little bit.
A little bit. A little bit. Board members have any questions or comments at this...
I do. So we're talking about money, but how about space? Are we doing, do you have space for...
Well, we were impacted by the library as well because we did move a couple of programs over there for the summer because there's lack of air conditioning. Excuse me, at the Aldersgate Church Town Hall Gym, so we moved those programs to the library. They were impacted. Unfortunately, right now, they're up and running, and the library's working with us, which is great. Masonic Lodge had a water main issue, so we are not able to use that space for three weeks, and we're trying to temporarily relocate that program. We've used Room 14 the past last week and this week. I don't know if that's sustainable, but that's what we're looking at.
This room?
This room.
How about the...
The gym doesn't have air conditioning, so it really can't. We've moved Emma's class to the senior center because it's air conditioning, but it is tight.
We were looking to see if we had enough funds to do the air conditioning in that particular room in short order, but the costs associated, the costs that we got were substantially more than previously determined.
Particularly to make sure we can accommodate what's usually athletic activity in there. We want to make sure that it works properly, so it's an expensive proposition that the TBW was looking at, and whether it's through a capital request or otherwise, we'll look to try to make that improvement, but it won't be for this season.
So, other than money...
Space.
Space, staff. You're in terrific shape.
Doing great.
And again, the long-term goal here, and obviously a discussion as far as a community center, whether it's going to be a senior center, whether it's going to be an intergenerational center, the timeline associated with when can we feel comfortable with a plan moving forward to put forth for consideration would certainly be outside the confines of the regular budget and would be a budget override request. There still needs to be some coalescing around whether it's going to be intergenerational or just senior center, and the key point of that... And the key point of that is, where do we put it? Again, oh, right here?
In this building.
But we're open to ideas and suggestions. So again, these are not new problems and stresses, the stresses are growing certainly because of the success of your programming and your outreach and the response that you're receiving. But it's, it doesn't go unnoticed, and it also doesn't go unheeded either. I mean, we certainly, I don't think there's anybody sitting here on this board that isn't concerned about meeting the needs of your programming and the outreach that you have and the effectiveness of it all, but to make it more effective and useful and accommodating is a challenge. And again, the senior center, Third Meeting House, you know, we have a second floor that isn't accessible. Again, not bad space, but you can't get there from here very easily. So with that, again, major investment in that particular facility, because we're not going to sell that one off, I don't think, so if we're going to invest in that, put elevators and interests and egresses that are going to meet the codes, going to be substantially expensive too, and again, time, time-wise. Yeah, Valerie?
Yeah, I just had a comment. Where the current senior center is, even though if we had an elevator and had access to the second floor, the parking there is really difficult for the amount of people.
It's a challenge nonetheless, but it doesn't mean that the facility shouldn't be upgraded and accessible for use anyway. Again, whether it remains there, if I'll go somewhere else, it's still a facility, a town facility that's underutilized at this point because we haven't been able to make the investment to make it properly accessible. Yeah, money. Anyway, any comments from the board members at this point, and then we'll, at some point we'll go to public comment. Mr. Sudo.
I may not need the microphone, usually loud enough, but I think one of the biggest things that hasn't been brought up is that, and we talked about it a little bit in the last session over the budget, is that we need some sort of senior center, intergenerational center, whatever you want to call it. The issue, though, with that is that I think we can get it done, but it needs to be sold to the greater community because it will need a tax increase. Anyone who's told you otherwise is lying. And I think, though, even though it's a big number, I think we can get the entire community because there is one guarantee that we will all get old. I'm not saying anyone here is old. So it's something that, whether it's now or later, it's a paid forward to self, right? So it's not like, I mean, you know, it really is. So I think that's the long-term solution, but I think we have to start being a little honest that it's, it's not the cheapest solution, but nothing cheap, and things cost money. And I think that we looked at some that were seven to 10 million, was that right, Mr.? That there was some estimate somewhere that, I forgot what, what town just did one.
Wilmington.
And.
I think it was 18 million in Wilmington.
It was actually 90 million.
Okay. So double what I just said. But again, we don't know what it would be. But again, I just want to say that that, I think, would solve a lot, from space to air conditioning, to ADA compliant, because that's the other issue that, my understanding, and I don't do it, but if you start touching certain things at the current community center, and it becomes like the Hillview, well, now you've got to fix everything, and then it becomes, well, we might as well just have a new one. So, so I just wanted to say that, that that is what I think we should work towards, and it's been brought up. It's just that every time we get to like, let's say there's like 10 steps in that process, and step three is to talk about the money, that's when all of a sudden, it just, no one wants to talk about it anymore. I'm just being honest about it. No one wants to. We tried, I've been on the board, this is year six, we've tried to have that conversation four or five times, and as soon as it gets to the, well, where's the money coming from, it just that, no one wants to talk about it anymore. And then it gets said, well, we have the money and we just don't. So again, I think together we can do it. The tax increase, I think, is worth it. It's not crazy, but just say, that's how we would pay for it, like anything else. You want to put an addition in your house, you may not like it, but if you find value in it, you'll still pay for it, like anything. So I just wanted to address that because I think that that is where it really will begin to solve the longer-term issue, because I think, and I'm, and I'm not on the council venue, but I've seen enough of these presentations that I feel like that would take care of like 70 to 80% of the issue. I mean, that's a big, it's an expensive fix for new, right? But I think that's the bigger discussion, that October Town Meeting, definitely not enough time, but for next June Town Meeting, could theoretically, if it gets put forward, at least a number be out there? And then it becomes, hey, here's the number, we have a plan, and then, well, then it's up to North Reading whether or not we want to finance it, right? And then if they don't, if we don't want to finance it, like a lot of things, we just don't want to, we'll find an alternative, but I think that, that's the, that's the part no one wants to say out loud, that anyone that says, everyone in this room proportionally, I don't know who, where people live, how much your house is worth, but everybody proportionally will get an increase to do this. I think it's important to do it. But if anyone tells you there's a way around that, give them my email address, and if they call me, they'll never repeat that comment again. So, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the other, other point to understand is, you know, there are other pressures on this board and the community as a whole for projects and meeting the needs of the community, and we're talking about fire station, right? So prioritization-wise, we can set forth some sort of an agenda, but it's town meeting that decides where the priorities really lie and what, what do we ask for in the timing of it all. So just keep that in mind, that, you know, if you're looking for a new community center, a new intergenerational center, a new senior center, you know, then there's going to have to be something put forward in the way of costs and ideas and location-wise, and it's going to be competing with other major infrastructure and structural buildings that need to be addressed in this community, particularly from a public safety standpoint. Just want to put that in perspective, too. Mr. Massey?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Very good point about some other projects that are coming up as well. My interpretation's always been, you know, you don't necessarily have to, you know, finish one project and move on to the next. You could simultaneously work on them, which is happening. The facilities master plan, I think, within, you know, a few weeks or a month, we're very close to receiving some estimates and some schematic designs, which is basically boxes on a piece of paper, seeing what fits, the square footage and how it fits on a potential land and what that land, how big do we need to put those, how big a land do we need to put those boxes on? So that is coming very soon, and I'm actually very interested, both intergenerational and senior center alone. So that'll, that'll actually push the ball forward for the committee to be able to really make some decisions on moving forward. And like I said, I think we can do it simultaneously. The current building, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure of the history, maybe never intended to be a senior center. I think it's served the community well for a long time. It requires some major, major upgrades, and that comes with some major costs, and I just don't know, you know, it's a historic building, how much really is, is there to grasp on to specifically with the parking issue if you start adding on to it? I, I think one of the greatest points that I've always kept bringing up is about Martin's Landing, expanding. I, you know, you can't set it and forget it, is what I use, as in, you can't build it and not expect them to come. This is a direct result. This should have been expected for a long time. But our senior center is, our senior population is increasing, the programming has been terrific. These people do a great job, and I know you all are here because you support what they do for you, which is incredible. I think as a board, one recommendation I would make is just, you know, I think, you know, for a long time, North Reading has been giving a lot of the same departments, the same percentile, percentage increase, and I think now it's time to prioritize our needs and think of what may need some more lovin' and what maybe has a little bit too much. Thank you.
Mara's the newest member of the board and now liaison to the Council on Aging. Let me get Mr. Waller's.
Thank you. I just want to commend Kim and her staff for all the incredible work they do and the Council on Aging and the incredible support they've provided to the senior center, and I think the programming is unbelievable. The, the number of programs that they offer just blew me away when I actually read through what's being offered. I don't think there's any argument that we need both more money for the department budget and we need a new facility, and it really comes down to cost. You know, the Wilmington Center that just got built, they originally appropriated $17.2 million, and they went over budget, so they had to have a special town meeting to get another 1.8 appropriated. So it's just a matter of cost. Can we find a way to raise $20 million? That's probably what it's going to come down to because you can't build it overnight. You know, if we have a plan of where that building might be situated in town, because that would be a large facility, and I think there's no argument we need it, it's just finding the dollars to pay for it and balancing that with the fire safety needs because that's also pressing. So I think we definitely need to look for the shortfall money in the budget to make this work. But long-term, I completely agree with Mr. Sudo. This is, this is a need, it's been addressed many times, and we need to find a way to pay for it. No question.
Again, whether we move together, you know, simultaneously or close to as far as the fire station, again, that's more, that's further along, I think, than any other project at this particular point in time. And as far as the need goes, we need to house our firefighters and apparatus moving forward. So it's, you know, it's a challenge, and again, it's, I, I don't think you're going to find anybody here, up here, you know, in disagreement and not supportive of what you're doing and the needs to do so. To Mrs. Mara's point, you know, we have a short-term problem that we have to see if we can solve it quickly just to maintain status quo and still have an eye towards the future and putting the records of dollars forth, and also, again, putting the proposals forth for the community to make a decision. These are big-money items that are going to impact every residential taxpayer in the town in North Reading. And again, they'll make the ultimate decisions. We have found that, you know, when we go for a big number of things with all-encompassing, with multitude of, or a variety of, of services and salaries and things of that, that doesn't fly too well. But when we give people a menu, and they make the choices, we seem to have a little more success, you know, as we did a year ago last November. So it's, you know, a year ago, June, we didn't have any success at all, you know? Following November, a few months later, we gave people a menu approach, and they pick and chose what they were willing to support and what, and again, knowing full, well, what, what it was going to cost them collectively as a community, but also individually, how's it going to impact my household and my tax bill, and can I afford it or not? And again, many of these decisions are very personal for people. They may be supportive, but they can't afford it. And we're cognizant of it, and I don't think there's anybody opposed to, you know, giving people choices. I think that's what we'll look to do, but in the, in the near term, in the short term, let's see if we can plug the hole here, and then, again, it goes back to my original question, how much time do we have? And do we have time to do it at October Town Meeting as opposed to, you know, depleting the resources that we currently have and may have available? And again, just taking care of it October? And again, I applaud your, first of all, the timing of it and coming forward now to talk about it because our warrant for the October Town Meeting closes in August. So when Rich and Catherine said, you know, they want to make a presentation here, give us the, lay the, lay the land and the status of things, we jumped at the opportunity. We want this, we want the dialogue, we want the input, and we, we need to know. And again, the administrator does a great job of keeping us well informed, but frontline people, it's more important to hear from them, too, rather than support. So again, we'll make every attempt to support the current level of programming, to stabilize things and maintain at least a status quo. As far as the long-term fix, it's already in the works, and this type of discussion helps move it along a little bit more, which is great. And Mr. Massey's point, you know, Facilities Master Plan Committee, part of their charge was to take a look at this type of facility and come up with some recommendations and costs associated with it, and those are coming. So that's a good thing. But again, we appreciate everybody's input and your presence here this evening, and again, you, I don't think you have to convince any of us as far as the, the gravity of the situation. So with that, Mr. Waller?
Yeah, just a quick thing. The discussion between senior center and intergenerational community center, I can just tell you the intergenerational community center gets more votes than just a senior center because you're including the whole town. So you should really be thinking intergenerational community center if you want to go, and if you, if you looked at the vote that just happened in Reading, that was exactly what happened.
Okay. Although I'd say.
Just $20 million more.
No. Kim and Valerie, you all set with your presentation?
Yeah.
Board members, you all set at this particular point in time? With that, what we'll do is open up the public comment section of the session of the, of the meeting, where we appreciate your presentation been made. People will be allowed to comment, not just on this, but other, other matters, too, but let's, let's keep the comments pertinent to this particular matter first, and if you have any comments in relation to anything else, we'll leave that to the second portion of the public meeting. Guidelines are two to three minutes, make your comments. We're not going to get into a debate about the issues per se, we just want to hear from you, so we'll be listening. And with that, I'll open it up for, for public comment. Yes?
Step right up.
Yeah, why don't you go up to the, please come up to the podium, okay? And please state your name and address.
You want to go? Sorry. I'm Maxie McPherson. I'm a member of the COA.
Maxie, I can't hear you.
Sorry.
Pull the microphone down.
I'm usually pretty loud. I'm a member of the COA, and I've been there for three years and watched as our budget stayed pretty much the same. We aren't looking right now to do the intergenerational or community center because that's not going to happen in my lifetime at the rate you guys are going, you know? I mean, but what we do need is, we need a senior center that doesn't have to depend on grants. You need to fund us at more than 1% of the budget, or half of 1%. You don't show up to our meetings, you don't know what the discussions are, you come just before elections to come to the meeting, but you don't come on regular days. And you have a staff of four full-time people trying to do transportation, medical things, talked about taxpayer assistance. These are things that need private rooms, we don't have private rooms. You have people who would like to attend classes, but they won't open the high school and let us use that, but all of the money, 65% of your budget goes to the school with a declining population, whereas our population is going up. So why isn't our budget going up? That's my two minutes, and that's my say. You want to talk about intergenerational. I, I'm 74 years old this week, I don't think it'll be in my lifetime.
Pat Fillmore, 24 Fieldcrest Terrace, and I am part of the senior center, and I see what they go through all, every day. I mean, between trying to fit people in there at the senior center to do their exercises, and they're all whacking each other in the face because we don't have enough room. Lunch is another thing.
Much to the success of Emma's classes because she doesn't have to have to.
Yes, I mean, Emma has 40-plus people there, and unfortunately, when they go to kick, they don't get as high as Emma does with her legs, and they end up kicking somebody in the backside. But we do need something, and I mean, and to say, an intergenera, you know, I hear a lot of discussion about the intergenerational. Parks and Rec, we've worked on that for a long time, intergenerational, because the adults work with the kids. We had that going from the middle school, the kids coming down and working with us. We've gone up there and worked with the kids. They work together well, and if it means killing two birds with one stone, let's do an intergenerational. I mean, we need to take care of the senior staff, which includes me, yeah. I mean, I've been a member of this town for 70 years, and we don't do a heck of a lot for the seniors, and we never have. Okay? We used to do the Thanksgiving dinner, but that was thanks to Brad Jones and a few other people, Senator Hart. You know, we don't do anything for them, and if you want to do it intergenerational, look at Wilmington's senior center. They're actually renting some of these rooms out after hours to help support it. We could do that. We could do that. I mean, we don't have a Hillview anymore for activities, so you could rent some of those rooms out, if in fact that we get, get it built. You know, and for the seniors, we need it. Because they have supported this town for more years than some of these kids that come into town and leave as soon as they get accepted at a private school.
Hi, good evening. My name's Kathy Stewart, I live at Thirteen Riverside Drive. I have to disagree with some of the statements that were made here. The people that live here and have started to live here now are not going to grow old here. They're going to get their kids out of school in the best school system they have, and they are going to leave. And I've heard this time and again at town meetings. So they're not going to be here. I also seriously doubt that they're going to provide anything for the seniors. The reason is, and I think they're well-intended, that they want the very best for their schools, but they do that at the expense of every other program in the town. It doesn't matter whether it's the fire department, or the senior department, or the library. Everything is cast aside to placate the people that want every single thing for the schools. And it really has got to stop a little bit. I understand what they're looking for, but you know, they don't have to have a hundred percent of everything. These people are sitting here asking for ninety-eight hundred dollars. Seriously? Nobody can give them that, but the school gets friggin' everything. The fire department, everything else goes to crap, because everybody is just for the school. And we are just left alone. And that's not fair. We have already provided, all of us, we provide for more of the funding for the schoolchildren than any other person, people in here. And yet, we don't get anything. And that's just, that's kind of unbelievable, and it just doesn't sound right. However, I really don't believe, when you put it before the town, that it would ever pass. Because I think they're too self-centered, I'll put it that way. Or they're too into their own involvement in what's important to them in the community. And so if the fire department doesn't come, the ambulance doesn't come, hey, too bad, but we got what we want. And that's got to stop. There's got to be a little more emphasis on us seniors and everything that we have provided through our state. You hear thirty-five, forty, fifty years in this town. You know, come on, that's really not quite right. They need, they need to give back the way we have given back for ten, twenty, thirty, forty years. So anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Nancy?
Hi, I'm Nancy Wolf for Sands Perlane North Reading. I am the contact for the senior center for the exercise program at the Masonic Lodge. I really honestly, if you ever have a chance, swing by, that parking lot is full. It's wonderful to see. It's a building that, you know, we chose to make available to them, choose my words very carefully, because it isn't used during the day. It's something that is available. And when Kim called with a need, we responded. I, I really, I, I think you have two problems. I think you have a short-term problem and a long-term problem. I really would encourage looking at some of the private-public partnerships that you could possibly get out of the community to help for a short-term solution until you get to a longer-term solution. I love having them there. It's not the best place for them, we all, we all agree on this. As much as, as we like having them there, it's not the best place for them. You know, we have a lot of open retail space in this town that potentially you could rent short-term to get them through, and let them, you know, sort of build their program, you know, and, and get some things going. It's, it'd be a nice thing to do for them. I also do want to mention that they are not the only town committee that has come asking for some space. I've had the Veterans Affairs Office as well, who is displaced from the Hillview. You know, again, we're, we're more than willing to try to help and do what we can, but I think that that partnership is something that short-term can help, not a long-term solution, but I think there are other parts of this community that could help bridge that gap until you get the funding that you need. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Yul?
I'm Green Yul for Twenty-Seven Parks Street. I've lived here for thirty years. In August, it'll be thirty years. And we've been talking about building a senior center for our seniors whom we cherish, it always comes with that caveat, for at least ten or fifteen years, maybe more, but that's what I remember. And somehow, we talk about it, we make ourselves feel good about talking about it and wanting to do something, but when the priority list comes, it goes to the bottom. And what this woman had said before is, we're very generous for our students, our children. Of course, we love them and want them to do well. My children did extremely well at North Reading High School. I'm not so sure I'd want them to be there now, but they did really well when they were And to Mr. Sutro's point, yes, we probably would have to put something out for the town to vote for it. We would have to fight very hard for it, because our competition is, once again, the school. But I think if we educate the larger community on how important this is, whether they stay here after their kids graduate from high school or not, they have parents, they have elderly people in their families, and wouldn't they want to see their families do well? There are towns all around us. I was just in Hingham, and saw the beautiful new fire station and police station that's almost finished being built. And now they're working on plans to make a new senior center where there's a large forest-type area near some condo associations. And they plan to have nice walkways and things, so seniors can, can walk and do exercises outside and do whatever. It just seems Wilmington has plans. Their engineer has said they'd be willing to help us and, and show us their plans. We, we can get help from other people, but somehow, we're just stuck in this mire. And there are Martin's Landing, obviously fifty-five and over, some people come to our senior center. But I've heard, and I know of, some people who go to other towns' senior centers, because they can offer air conditioning and more adequate spaces, more adequate of anything, parking. Why would we have our seniors go to another town? It's embarrassing, I'm sorry. It's embarrassing. Please put some priority on this and not just talk. Don't just look to fund them ninety-eight hundred dollars and be satisfied with that. That's just so unsatisfactory.
I'm already sat in Elm Street in North Reading. I've been in the town for forty years, I'm on the Friends of the Aging and all that. I want you to take a look and go to the senior center and take a look and see what the town has bought for that senior center. Zero. We have bought every damn thing that is in that senior center. The microwave, the fridge, the countertop. We even have to buy postage stamps. And we're going to present you today, I'm so full with a check to fund the programs. She said we could go maybe December. You know why? Because we busted our plain English, you know what, to come up with the money. You guys have funded nothing. Several years ago, they didn't even have enough money in the budget to buy a Christmas tree. There was no Christmas tree for the senior center. Me and my husband went out to Home Depot and bought the damn Christmas tree and all the decorations to put up on there. I, I've been in this, me, I was one of the founders of Friends, we did it over thirty years ago before I was even a senior. And there was Dilly Squaw. So this crap about the multicultural is a bull, bull. It's totally bull. We're going to, seventy-five percent of these people here are going to be dead. And it's not ever going to happen. Alls we're asking for is you to come up with a little bit of money. So if it wasn't for, tonight, we're going to present you with a nice big fat check. If we didn't present you with that check, half the programs, the martial arts, all that, would be all gone, because the Friends have been, what, has been supporting the senior center for the past five years. And pretty soon, we're going to run out of money. Every time we sit there, we listen to Kim say, "No money, they're cutting me, they're cutting me of no money." So this crap about, oh, let's go for the senior center and the multi, is a bunch of bull. What we want is now, before we die. Every playground in this town I have built, your town side, I was on the committee. The memorials, I was on the committee. Every playground that the kids bought, my name and my husband's names on it. And what do we get from that? Oh, we'll think about it, and when you're dead, we'll put a flower in your grave. Because you're actually a good sucker for this town. Done.
Hello. Jackie Quinn, Five Castle Road. They say a picture is worth a thousand words. So I welcome all of you and everyone on the Zoom to just stop by the senior center at any, any point, or follow any one of the staff member from building to building as they're posting a sign saying, "It's closed, come here," getting the calls of folks who are just trying to get to programs, but having to dodge the multiple messages. So I welcome all of you to just follow us around, and you'll really get a picture of what we're experiencing, and then maybe can become the advocate that we're all trying to share. So, thank you.
Any other further comments in relation to presentation this evening? Okay.
I don't have a problem with that, but come on, guys. Cal Bork, Seven Eames Street here in North Reading, I've been here fifty-eight years. Mr. Wartner? Why don't you come and see us? You ran a big campaign about how much you do for the senior center. I haven't seen you there, so would you please come?
We're not going to, we're not going to get personal attacks on people.
No, I'm not. That's all I'm saying, is please come. Come and see us at the center.
By the way, by the way, you know, just, just as far as the members', you know, liaison assignments, it doesn't go just to the show up at the Council on Aging meeting, or show up at the Board of Health meeting like I am. You know, there's a lot of communication that takes place during the course of the weeks, the months, the years, between department heads, administration, and liaisons to get the message to the board. So, anyway, so your point is you're looking for fifty percent of, we're, we're trying to get you to a hundred percent, but-
I would like a hundred percent, but I would be glad if you gave us something, you know? Really. And the other thing is, we are having the parking lot, the DPW is going to pave the parking lot, and it's going to be done in August. And I wanted to tell you that privately. But it is going to be paved, okay? Because I know what's going to happen, if somebody's going to trip and fall. Unbelievable, I'm sorry to say it, I would not want that to happen, but somebody's going to fall, and then they're going to sue the town. But it will be paved, from what I have been told. Excuse me?
She's saying that the parking lot is going to be paved in August, from what she's been told.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cal. Michael, you had a comment? Any other comments in relation to the presentation and the issue before us at this particular point in time? Hearing none. Again, I appreciate everybody's coming out this evening. We do appreciate your comments, we appreciate your candidness. And, you know, I think the message is received, for sure. And we'll make concerted effort to, first of all, again, as I started off earlier in the evening, you know, let's plug the hole right now and see what we can do to maintain status quo, and then plan, plan for moving forward. And again, your advocacy is appreciated, it's heard, it's resonating, and it's important. Because again, this is a small group of people here, and it has to resonate throughout. I know it has to start here, which is great, but it also has to resonate throughout the entire community. And this evening is a, is a great follow-up with what's already being done by organizations such as the Friends of the Council on Aging. And again, later on on the agenda, acceptance of funds in order to maintain what's being done there is huge. And it doesn't go unnoticed. But I know it's a, it's an awful lot of effort that's being put in here by volunteers to raise these funds to support a program that isn't meeting our needs at this particular point in time. But it's important that you continue to advocate, it's important that you continue to support, that you continue, that you continue to keep us informed too. And we can appreciate very much.
I got one comment. Peter Polo.
Yep, here.
How does a half of one percent of the town budget get allocated for a third of the population of the community? And does that, can that ever get, needle get moved?
Sure, the needle can get moved, but then it becomes at the expense of some, something or some other programming. Again, that's what all the, the budgeting, this is, I know, but this is what, this is what happens every year. Every year, we go through prioritization of funding, and we only have X number of dollars that are raised through appropriations, right?
Percentage-wise, it's less.
No disagreement. I'm just saying, that's how it's done, every single year.
Can it be changed? How can that be changed going forward? We need to allocate more funds for this population. More than a half of one percent of the town budget. It's like crazy, those numbers don't make sense.
Thank you. Ms. Damián?
I realize public comment may be closed, but-
Not yet. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a comment. I understand the budget issues, and I have great respect for all of the opinions that were expressed this evening, on all sides frankly. People are, I, I love seeing how concerned everyone is on this issue. That's really important. And I think the presentation by the board is, we want to feel comfortable that you're aware of what, how we feel and what we need. So I think that in that respect, this has been incredibly successful. But what I'd like to do is just take a moment to share and highlight some very personal things. On that list of what the senior center provides, I looked at, well, I'll tell you how, three years ago, my husband and I became involved for the first time with the senior center. It was health and wellness. And there was a class offered that I read about in the transcript and in the newsletter from the senior center, because clearly, we made it to the list because of our age, on balance matters. That was sponsored by a grant from Mystic Valley Elder Services. And we looked at that and thought, hey, you know, we've joint replacements, different things, let's take it. And I was so impressed with the quality of the offering, the people we met. I met other seniors from town that I had never met before, because their kids didn't go to school with my kids or for whatever reason. Met some incredible people, learned a lot of different stories, and I saw firsthand how the quality of their lives improved because of this single offering. And frankly, my husband and I left that class having made friends and saying to ourselves, we're, we've decided, we decided at the time to age and place. You know, with the things that are provided by, by this community, we, we can age and place, let's do that. And I just share that as a personal story, because all the way through, since then, and learning more about what's, the services provided through the senior center, there's something for everyone. Much of what's offered might not be of interest to me, or I may not need it, but someone else does, someone else I've met in town does need it. And what an incredible resource. I, I'm just so impressed with what the possibilities are. And the fact that it's being done with the limited resources that are available, and the creativity of the people who are trying to run these programs, I'm, I'm beyond impressed with the creativity involved. So, that's on the personal note. We got to get back to the reality of it. I'll, I'll make one comment, which I found humorous, it may not be humorous, but when I first moved to town, it was during the ninety-ninety-one school year, and some of, a referendum had to do with building new schools. The Batch, which, that's where my kids went, very old building. And we voted, we kept voting around new schools. Well, my kids grew up, they graduated from the old high school, but my husband, who was a teacher, actually made it to the new school. And we all joked, well, the kids never got to appreciate attending the new school. And we all joked, well, the kids never got to appreciate attending the new school, but hey, Nick, you did, I hope you're enjoying it. So a little bit of humor in our family. But, but the important thing is it happened and the new schools, you know, in the end it improved, well, I can go off on that as well. But my point is we have to fight for having a community that serves everyone. And I'm just so pleased with our opportunity to be able to present to each of you our, our feelings regardless of what side it's on. And we hope that it becomes part of a master plan. It may not be the first thing accomplished, but I hope it's one of the things that's planned for and ultimately accomplished. And I also do hope that it's in within my lifetime. I hope it will be.
Thanks. I'm sorry to double dip, but I just have to kind of do this. I have so much respect for the people at the senior center. I can't even tell you, my husband and I have been pretty much injured for the whole year. I don't know what we're doing wrong, but we're doing something. And every week right now, because neither of us can drive, I've got a lame leg here again, I had a broken neck, whatever, he had a broken hip, you don't want to hear that. But anyway, we require a minimum of 10 rides a week to go to different places because we can't drive. I can't tell you how the senior center has been as responsive as they possibly could. They've set us up with as many people as they can. We appreciate whatever they can do, even if it's just once a week. I've personally been affected by going to some of the caregivers program that Mystic Valley has also supported with them. And I cannot say enough about how they do so much with so little. And if we could just, you know, help, help us out, help them out a little bit, I think it would benefit everybody. That's it, thanks.
Sure, Mr. Wattner.
Yeah, just, I guess somebody has to be the bad guy and it keeps coming my way. I just want to make something very clear. Kevin and I have been working on senior issues for like 15 years ago and we'd meet every, every Thursday at 10:30 once a month to go over issues that were affecting our town. And when it came to the aging, the AARP aging friendly thing, that was a study that we did with UMass Gerontology and I ended up being the last man standing to present the lecture. That was an hour and a half lecture about things that, how our town was working and how we can make it better. So how have we made it better? Even if it was just a short-term solution, the two biggest things that people complained about was transportation and property taxes. Well, I just announced earlier that we've tried to set up through the Tax Aid Committee a way to support our most people who are at highest risk of leaving our town because their property taxes are too high. Have we solved every problem? No, but that was a safety net that we created to support the seniors. There wasn't a transportation committee until I created a transportation committee and the board supported it. And the transportation that we've seen now is a direct result of the transportation committee that we created in order to, to become more responsive to the needs of our town. Three, four years ago, it didn't exist. And then the other thing is that public services director, we didn't even have a public services director until I brought it up and then the town, the select board supported it. We hired a public service director and a lot of his time has been devoted to making things better for the seniors. So we can talk about, you know, how bad things are now and I totally agree, there's much we have to do, but it hasn't been like we've been sitting on our hands doing nothing. We've been doing something to, to address the most core issues that are going. It's very clear also that the people that were running the senior center before never asked, never kept up with the rate of increase. We started out with 15% seniors, we're now up to 30%. That was predicted a long time ago, but when the budget came up, it was never more than a levelled service budget, which I often said, why are you doing that? You have to go for what we need, not just levelled service budget. So that needs, you know, the budget process needs to be reviewed more carefully. Right now, Chair and I are going to be on, this is my first year working on the budget. I fully anticipate that'll be something I'll be advocating for and should be, and I understand the need. So, you know, I think if anybody, I'm probably as well versed as anybody about what's going on with the seniors. And I'll say one other thing, somebody brought it up. People that leave our town in, in the state, when, when you ask people who have their kids in school, what is the percentage of people who plan to bail on their town once they get their kids through school? What is it? Statewide, it's 20%. When we did that same question in our town, it was 40%, double the state average. UMass Gerontology Group told us, they've never heard of that number before, but that number's in our town. And why is that? Because we haven't given seniors a reason to stay. We haven't given those people who came out of school a reason to stay in their community because we don't offer them anything to stay. And that to me is the most compelling thing that needs to happen. So if we can all work together and not fight with each other, which is what I'm asking for, we can make progress. And so we have to work together as a community. You telling us what your needs are is very important and it's good to hear it again. It reminds me how important all this is. But we have to work together as a community and you have to work together with the board and we have to work together with the schools because they understand this issue as well. If you don't have the seniors to support the schools, the cycle of their quality is going to go way down. So they, they depend on you as much as we depend on them. So we have to work together as a community. That's my last gasp, thank you.
Ms. Deel.
Jeff Yule, 427 Park Street, excuse my voice. I guess two things. With regard to the select board, when it comes to creating the budget, you have to decide what percentages are going where, correct? Of your revenue, so.
You sat here for six years, correct?
All right, so as I recall, when I was on the board, the ratio was 60/40, 60 for the schools, 40 for.
It's been 60, it's been two-thirds, one-third for 50 years.
Okay, well, I'm not going to get into that because I would disagree with that. I don't want to belabor that. But the other thing is you have the senior center, you have the town gym, and you have the, our public school system. And it seems to me that the public, our schools keep themselves separate and apart to what's going on in the town. Where I'm going with this is that it would seem to me that the facilities in the schools should be open to other people in the town at no cost, okay? So, so that they can use the gym or they can, an area in the gym, or they can use the weight room, or they can use something in the school without being charged a fee because they do have a list, a fee, if you want to use it, you have to pay this, all right? So they shouldn't be autonomous to the town. All right, so I think what you can do to begin to open up things is to put pressure on the school to make it a point to have a senior program at the school that is accessible after school hours. That I think would help in the interim. Okay, so you can do that, you can put that pressure on them. And I'd like, I'd like you to do, to do that, okay? Thank you.
Ms. Fillmore, once more.
Yes, Pat Fillmore, 24 Fieldcrest Terrace. In regards to that, Jeff, they'll still have to pay a custodial fee to clean up because they will have to, that's the name of the game. And they only have so many hours during the school year, there's kids in the building. There's kids, there's kids after the school hour with sports and everything, so it's almost impossible to have the gym or the weight room to be available to the seniors every day, all day. That's.
Well, I didn't suggest that. I'm just suggesting that they should share the facilities.
Oh, I'm not saying, but I'm sure that they would if they could, but.
Thank you. Any other comments in relation to the presentation this evening?
I would just like to say one thing.
All right, how about name and address?
My name is Susan Lutgens and I live in Lynnfield. But I was recommended to come to the North Reading Senior Center because of Annette. I was one fall away from being a quadriplegic. I have a plate and screws in my neck and through the reputation of Annette that has traveled to different senior centers that I should come to her. And because of her, I can come up here, I can stand here and I can say, being a senior citizen is sometimes difficult, but it's not, it's not old that she helps and that it helps people. So I just want people to remember that, that it is so important and I appreciate everything that now we have a drumming corps so that if you have anyone that wants to help us, we're here and we're glad to help you.
I understand you're going to need an agent. Say the bus.
We're looking to get a bus, you know? But anyway, I just want to thank her and let people know that it is so important to have something that you can turn to, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Gilberto.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, there's one comment online from Maureen Doherty, North Reading Transcript. Could the seniors use the accessory gym at the North Reading High School this summer? Does have air conditioning potentially for exercise classes. That's something that we will look into, but as Mrs. Fillmore indicated, there is often a charge that goes along with staffing the building, particularly in the off-hours, but we will follow up on that.
Just looking to comment to that real quick. I think, I think that was a tremendous idea. I was actually disappointed to hear that the schools don't offer that. They might not always need a gymnasium or a cafeteria, they could, they could use a classroom. So I just want, you know, just broad too. I mean, we have the Batch right next to the senior center, we have high school there, there's other schools and there's got to be some space available and I think that the select board should try and help, help the senior center with that a little bit.
Well said, Mr. Gilberto. Yep. All right, any other comments? Hearing none, we'll conclude this portion of the agenda. Again, appreciate your coming out this evening. I will allow for public comment after the public hearing on the, the public hearing, we'll have public comment again for other issues. Yes, Kevin, that'll be two in one meeting and it was unplanned and, but, so there'll be a continuation. All right, continuation. So again, thank you very much for coming out this evening. You do not have to hang in, don't feel obliged, but you're more than welcome. And we'll take a three-minute recess to allow people to, to leave. Jim, there's going to be another, excuse me, one more agenda item, my fault here, that we should probably take care of now so that people here can appreciate what's being done. And again, there's a agenda item number 10. This is a gift from the Friends of the Council on Aging for Elder Services Department. We need to take a vote to accept it. So if members could be just, take a seat. Mr. Massey, Mr. Studo, thank you. All right, excuse me. Who's going to take the lead on this? Yep, okay. Mr. Gilberto.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just want to recognize a gift from the Friends of the Council on Aging. It's a $6,440 check for the Edith O'Leary Senior Center for funding martial arts, yoga, and mindfulness classes for fiscal year 2026. Thank them for that.
Mrs. Manzilli. So with that. All right, Mrs. Moran, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to vote to accept the amount of $6,440 as a gift for the Department of Elder Services from the Friends of the North Reading Council on Aging.
Second. Second by Mr. Studo. Any further discussion? I think we've had lots of discussion as far as the value of the Friends of the Council on Aging, all they have done in the past and continue to do, certainly appreciated and on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Mystic Valley Ellison? What is that, a letter?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, there was a second donation that we received.
Ms. Big. Mr. Gilberto.
It's a second donation, the amount of $1,231.43 from Mystic Valley Elder Services for their 50th anniversary barbecue, which a number of us were able to attend over at Aldersgate back in June. We thanked them for the gift to fund that celebration.
Mrs. Moran.
Mr. Chairman, I move to.
Excuse me, if we could just keep the noise down a second please. Mrs. Moran.
Mr. Chairman, I move to vote to accept the amount of $1,231.43 as a gift for sponsorship of Mystic Valley Elder Services 50th Anniversary Barbecue Celebration from Mystic Valley Elder Services.
Second. Second by Mr. Massey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous. And just as far as Mystic Valley Elder Services, they are a fantastic partner for our seniors here in the community and again, 50 years. Thank goodness for that, hopefully 50 more. And again, please extend our appreciation to them for their gift that certainly needed and greatly appreciated. All right.
According to Facebook, there were 200 people in the room tonight. There weren't 200 people, but that's okay.
Don't tell the fire chief we have 200 people.
Not that it'd be bad, but there wasn't 200 people.
Mr. Gilberto, should we go to the show cause?
Sure.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, there is a hearing notice that went to the proprietor, to the manager of record actually, for Hypothecary Ales. It's in the packet if someone wants to read it, it's a, I believe a one-page letter. Try to get us to the page number. I believe it's page 14. I'm happy to read that if folks would like to, that would.
Sure, please do.
Sure, so it's addressed to the manager of record, James Dietz. "On Monday, July 21st, 2025, the select board will hold an in-person and virtual hearing on the matter of your annual all alcohol license regulation violation. The public portion of this meeting will begin at 7:30 PM. You're invited to show cause why your license should not be revoked, suspended, or amended due to reports from the North Reading Police Department concerning the alleged violation of MGL Chapter 138, Section 34, sale, delivery, or furnishing alcoholic beverages to persons under 21 years of age on Monday, June 9th, 2025. We included information about how the meeting could be accessed virtually via Zoom. Signed by myself, Michael Gilberto, in a letter that was dated July 8th, 2025." With us this evening is the Chief of Police who will review reports that were provided to the select board with regard to this alleged violation for, for the record.
Chief Zimmerman. And by the way, Mr. Dietz, thank you very much for your patience and willingness to allow us to hear from our constituencies in relation to the senior Council on Aging's presentation. Appreciate it very much. Chief Zimmerman.
Thank you, Chairman O'Leary. As part of our ongoing efforts to reduce, so what I did is I prepared just a brief summary from the report that I received from the detectives who went out that night. As part of our ongoing efforts to reduce the availability of alcohol and prevent underage drink in our community, we've conducted alcohol compliance checks at businesses licensed to sell alcohol. Our department conducts these checks following the Massachusetts Alcohol Beverage Commission guidelines. As part of those guidelines, we advertised in the North Reading Transcript on May 22nd, 2025, appearing on page 6. On the North Reading Patch website on May 15th, 2025, the North Reading Police Department's Facebook social media page, as well as the North Reading Community Impact Team Facebook page also posted on May 15th, 2025. On June 9th, 2025, the North Reading detectives, with the assistance of two underage persons, conducted alcohol compliance checks at various alcohol vendors in North Reading. An operations briefing was conducted. in North Reading. An operations briefing was conducted. Instructions were given to the participants on how to, how the compliance checks would be conducted. A list of alcohol compliance guidelines was given to each underage person and signed by them. State identification cards, license were confiscated from the underage persons. All personal belongings were left at the police station with only, with the only exception being their cell phones. As part of the alcohol compliance guidelines, the underage persons was given a breathalyzer test, which was documented, and the result of each underage person showed a 0.00 blood alcohol content. The following instructions were given to each underage person regarding how to perform alcohol compliance checks. The underage person is to enter the designated establishment and order an alcoholic beverage from a server or bartender. If a state identification card license was requested by a bartender server, they would state they did not have one with them, and if the service was still not provided, they would, they would be instructed to leave the premises. The underage person is not to provide false information to employees such as portraying themselves as 21 or older. If they were served an alcoholic beverage, they would make a mental note of who the server or bartender was. They, they then would notify the detectives. On June 9, 2025, at approximately 4:53 p.m., one underage person and Detective Paul Lucci arrived at the Apothecary Ales Brewery and Kitchen located at 303 Main Street, Number One, North Reading, Mass. This restaurant buy have an alcohol license issued through the town of North Reading. Detective Lucci was positioned outside of the establishment and observed patrons entering and exiting the main property area. At approximately 4:54 p.m., the assigned underage person entered the Apothecary Ales Brewery and Kitchen. It should be noted that this underage person that we were using that night is 17 years old. Within a few minutes, Detective Lucci received a text notification from the underage person indicating they were served. That text message he received was an S, which was their code. Detective Lucci then entered the property and observed the underage person sitting at the bar with the full alcoholic beverage beer on the top, on the bar top in front of him. Detective Lucci asked the underage person if the bartender was the current bartender behind the bar which served the alcoholic beverage, and he was told yes. Detective Lucci then took a photograph of the beverage that was served to the underage person and instructed the underage person to leave the premises and that he would meet the underage person outside of the establishment. Detective Lucci then spoke to the bartender, who is now identified as John Welton, and explained to him he was conducting alcohol compliance checks using an underage person who he just served alcohol to. He explained to Mr. Welton that since he served alcohol to a minor, he could possibly be criminally charged with furnishing alcohol to a minor. Detective Lucci verified Mr. Welton's responsible alcohol server trained tips card, and his training was up to date. He then asked Mr. Welton if a manager was available, and if not, to have someone contact the manager to come to the restaurant. Manager Morikai Nagar then arrived. Lucci explained to Mr. Nagar that Mr. Welton did not ID a minor and a violation occurred. Mr. Nagar and Mr. Welton were both advised what the next steps were, including notifying myself that I would be notifying the town administrator and the Select Board, who governs alcohol licensing for the town. They were also advised that a public hearing may take place regarding this violation, and prior to leaving, a violation notice was issued to Mr. Nagar. Detective Lucci then left the establishment and went outside to speak with the underage person. The following is a summary of what that underage person told Detective Lucci. They entered the Apothecary Ales via the front entrance and immediately sat at the main bar opposite the brewery side and sat at one of the seats. They were greeted by the bartender and requested a Bud Light beer. The bartender told them, quote, "No, we can't. We're a brewery." The underage person asked for a menu, and the bartender recommended a beer, which was the Cura de la Sed, which is one of their Mexican lagers. The underage person accepted the suggestion, and the underage person noted the bartender looked at him during this exchange. The bartender served the underage person the beer, putting it on a napkin, and placing it in front of them on the bar. They described the bartender as a male who was the current bartender when Detective Lucci walked in, later identified as Mr. Welton. This is a summary. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to note, too, that our Drug Free Communities Grand Director, Amy Lockowitz, who also serves as a Select Board server, trainer, program auditor, visited Apothecary Ales for a follow-up visit. The visit was to review the violations and answer any questions they might have. She was provided with the current roster and copies of everyone's tips cards. And that is the summary. I'd be able to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you. Mr. Dietz, are you represented by council? Are you just representing yourself?
I'm just representing myself.
Okay. And comments in relation to the occurrence and your take on the situation?
I, I'm not gonna, I opening this year, it's good thing to be here as also the owner and how that situation went down, just so I can also kind of create my staff. You know, I don't have much to say, other than it's something we can take serious and operate businesses in the town since 2012. This is the first time I've been in this world, this is the only other way I'm going. So I'd like to say I'm a good operator of the town. I definitely take this seriously. I've trained since, and work with them, to keep our attention up. I'm not arguing at all what happened, but I think it's kind of out of print in this period. We'll see it, hear it from that end, how that happened. It's frustrating to hear it, but it's, it's something we don't want to do. Aside from that, I don't have too much more to say, aside that we take this serious. We don't want to be certain kids of their age. That's not what we're trying to do in this town. We want to apologize for what happened. We've dealt with it. We continue to deal with it, continue our behavior to keep it secure and engaged as often we can, and really express the importance of every way we can. I really wish more to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dietz. I think what is important to point out to yourself and also other holders of the licenses, that, you know, these compliance checks are something that the police department's been doing for a number of years here. And when they instituted it, we wanted to ensure that there was a sense of fairness, and it wasn't going to be a situation where, you know, go out and it's a gotcha type situation. There's a significant amount of adequate notification, public notification of these operations, well in advance of when it's going to occur. And this board is always taking the position that, you know, the license is a privilege, not a right, and we take it extremely seriously and ensure that, to ensure that the license holders are properly trained, but also are protective of the children in our community, underage, underage drinkers. So as a result, it's, it's been a practice over the past 30-plus years or so, that with an occurrence such as this, there's a suspension of a license for a period of time. I can tell you firsthand, you know, that while some of the licensees have appealed the suspension to the state, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, through public, through hearings, of those suspensions have upheld the town on North Reading's suspension because we've been extremely diligent about it. We've been extremely consistent as to how we've handled the situations, and as far as any type of suspensions that have been handed out, we've been extremely consistent in that manner also. Again, it's entirely up to the majority of this board as to how we handle the situation. I would just encourage my board members to look at the information that was provided to, to you in the packet, as to what we've done over the last 30 years, and that the consistency of that is important to send two messages. One, to the license holders, and also to the state, you know, that we take it seriously, and we're consistent in how we dole out any, any punishment associated with it. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions from members of the board. Mr. Dietz, or to the chief, as to methodologies or what's occurring, or what's occurring and all the rest. Mr. Massey?
Yeah, Mr. Dietz, Nick Massey, Select Board. Just want to check in if you understand, I guess, what the typical consequence is for a first offense. Have you been debriefed of what is standard for North Reading on that consequence?
Um, I have, no, I've heard rumors, like I said, this is never a convention in the town, so I haven't had to deal with this before. So I'm unaware of how you handle whether the town should continue handling it, or whether it's a process.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking at the, I, I think we should have notified you of what the typical first offense is, but the typical first offense is, is three days. I'm looking at information going back to 95, where, where even the town has been pretty consistent with how they've come down, and I just wanted you to know about that ahead of time.
Okay, thank you.
Do any of the board members have any questions, comments, from the chief or Mr. Dietz? Mr. Studo?
I'd say that one of the things that's inconsistent with, I mean, the first-time offenders where, where, again, it's not about being punitive. It's about just being consistent. So I think what we've also done is that we've tried to, especially with, I mean, with repeat offenders, we've done it differently, which we did have some, but do it where, you know, you're always going to feel some pain not being able to sell alcohol, but not to do it over a period that would be, you know, considered a high volume, three days, right? Because we don't, you know, it's the first time. So that's where we, I just want to make that comment, that I noticed that, you know, with the exception of Lucky Mark, the third time's a charm, just they just couldn't get out of their own way. I think that was the only time we've actually done it where it's like, you know, I mean, you're just putting us in an impossible position. But I just wanted to state that, that I do think that, you know, we should stay consistent with the three days like we've done with others, the latest one being Sports Takes and Spirits in '24, but to do it, you know, just during like normal time, not over some big event.
Not avoiding St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah, correct. Yes, not turning St. Patrick's Day.
Again, to Mr. Studo's point, you know, this, Mr. Dietz, this is not punitive. You know, this is important for the, for the board to be consistent, but also to send a message, not just to you, but to all the other license holders and to the state, that we are consistent in how we dole it out. And again, from punitive standpoint, with repeat offenders, yes, we get more punitive in relation to the days that the suspension takes place, where it inflicts a significant amount of financial harm. What we don't want to do is, you know, if you have a, if you have a function that you're, you know, you've rented the establishment out, we don't want to interfere with that. You know, we don't, we want to make sure that, you know, if you've contracted with somebody, you know, to utilize your, your establishment, we certainly don't want to, to impede that, because there, there would be, again, they're not, they shouldn't be impacted, because they're not a party to this. Mr. Welton? No? Mr. Moran?
That was my question one, that this period of three days will start.
Again, it's entirely up to this board, and again, we'd be more than happy to take suggestions from, from the license holder as to, you know, if you want to talk about, you know, if you look at your calendar. Again, Mr. Dietz, we don't want to, we don't want to impact, you know, anybody that you've already contracted service, whether rent out rooms or have a function.
Yeah, I'd kind of follow along. So it's been voted that there's going to be a three-day suspension?
There will be a motion made for a three-day suspension. Again, the board can do something more or less, but I believe, I believe there's a motion already drawn up without any date in it, so we'll hopefully to work with you as far as which days.
Okay, so we're looking to pick dates right now?
Yes.
I'm sorry about...
Yes.
Probably a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, I do, if it's a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, that's, that's fine at this point. Again, you know, and again, we do want to acknowledge, you know, you've been, you've been in business, and you've been a terrific establishment, and a good contributing member of the business community, to our community. You've been extremely generous, and it's certainly appreciated, and that's certainly taken into consideration, and your courtesy this evening of allowing us to postpone this pain on you for an hour and a half.
Okay. Do you just question something? How, what's the time for these three days?
It'd be three consecutive days, and generally we have a motion to surrender the license.
Yeah, normally you would surrender the license the end of the day before your suspension. They would generally be three consecutive days. I'm not sure that they have to be, but that's generally what they would be. And then you would pick it back up from the police station, the beginning of the fourth, fifth day, basically.
Okay. I mean, if I do have any, say, here, the ideal situation, obviously not be the suspension, but I understand the severity of that, and not arguing any of that, nor it just as I'm saying before, that we, we, we were aware of the operations, that they have a good job of, led a great, so none of that is a question. But ideally, if, if I could, it would be the consecutive days, the three weeks in a row, like Monday, Monday, Monday would be the least interaction to my business. The summertime is slow, and as being a brewery, this is going to, you know, influence that does on a financial level, just more apparent timing and stuff, but again, not, so that wouldn't be my, I guess, my ask, would be considering that three consecutive days, if you, Monday, Monday, and Monday, you know, my exposure on the paneling here, on the financial side. If it is three consecutive days, technically I could do a lot of functions, I'd say a look. And my, I did ask the question, too, was, you know, how far out could I schedule this? I think it was September, October, is this need to happen immediately?
Before football season.
Yeah, you want to get it in before football.
Yeah, you want to get it in before the football season, I would think.
Yeah, no, like I said, yeah, the question, but it, yeah.
What's the pleasure of the board as far as either three consecutive days or three consecutive Mondays?
What, what have we done in the past?
The past has generally been, I recall, just three consecutive days. And again, just, just to state for the record that, you know, Mr. Dietz has, has rights. He does have the right to appeal to the state, which again, would delay things, but certainly within his rights to do so, and it isn't held against you, Mr. Dietz, if you were to exercise those rights. But I can assure you that, you know, council and probably myself, remember, the board would present themselves before the ABCC with the record of consistency in what we do. But that's entirely up to you, and you're certainly within your rights to do so, and we don't begrudge you the opportunity to do, to do that. So again, to the, to the board members, three consecutive days or suggested by the license holder? I'm good with either.
Out of the last, out of the last 35 citations, 25 of them have been three days, and if the record has been three consecutive days, I think we should be consistent. That's 70% of all of them.
Yeah. Mr. Welton?
Yeah, three consecutive days.
Mr. Studo?
Yep.
Yeah, I said either. I started off.
Okay.
I said either.
I'm sorry. Didn't hate. All right. So the consensus, Mr. Dietz, is three consecutive days. I understand you have things brewing, so, good to time it.
Yeah.
No pun intended.
No pun intended. You're on fire. It's nice.
Do I have, I'm going to ask for 24 hours, and get back to you, so I can consult with my manager as to the brewing operations, just to plan those days, or is it happening?
I guess it could be a motion to provide parameters for when they need to occur by, and that they could provide a dates, or we could reconvene and continue the hearing to some other date, even if it's virtual, to receive the feedback in the context of a meeting and then take a vote. Otherwise, I would imagine, I would see it being left at its, at the discretion of the manager, to identify three dates presumably before a certain date, whether it's September 1st, or whatever you want to pick for a date. Be a little unorthodox, but I think it could be done.
They want to do that rather than reconvene?
I think that's fine.
All right. So the motion would be to suspend the all-alcohol license for Apothecary Ale Brewery and Kitchen for three days, three consecutive days, to be determined, to be agreed upon by the administration, police department, and the license holder prior to August 1st. Right? And you said 24 hours, so just say... No, 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 I mean, we... No, 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 I mean, we can, he can give us the three days.
Oh, okay.
You know, he might, might be sometime in August. Okay? So prior to August thirty-first.
Yep, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I threw that out there. It doesn't have to be.
And we caught it.
No, that's fine. And again, Mr. Dietz, if you want to do something next week, that's fine. If you want to do something in the second or third week of, first, second, or third week of August, that, just inform the administration and the, and the police chief.
Just to be clear, I think the first iteration of that motion, we were agreeing upon it. I think it's best if he just be allowed the opportunity to identify the three days and provide them to us, rather than us figuring it out. I don't think we have a preference.
No, I don't think we have a preference. I just, I just want the proper chain of command to be notified.
Yeah, he just, he needs to notify us what the three days will be.
All right. All right, so the motion would read to suspend for three consecutive days, which will occur prior to August thirty-first. The licensee will notify the administration of the three days, what the three days are gonna be.
By like the end of the week, within twenty-four hours? Do you want to give them a time?
Right, I think we give them Wednesday. Unless he wants to start serving on Wednesday. Do you have anything to add, Chief? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Chief? No, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. I, just the date, so we know when to pick up the license and when we need to return it. It's the most important.
So Mr. Dietz, if you notify us by four o'clock on Wednesday?
Okay, how do I reply to that?
And you can contact my office, Mr. Dietz, nine seven eight six six four six zero one zero, by phone and then. Nine seven eight six six four six zero one zero. And then we'll probably just memorialize it with an email after the fact.
Okay, and who do I ask for?
Uh, you can talk to Jen in the office or, or myself.
So Jen McNeil.
Or Mike Gilberto. You can talk to Honey as well.
No, I need to, right.
So we'll, we'll just memorialize it with a, a document afterwards.
Any further input or comments of the public hearing? Hearing now closed, the public hearing.
And I just want to, just want to mention real quick.
We'll deliberate, go ahead. Mr. Massey.
I, I, it's unfortunate to hear what's happening. And I, and I know Apothecary is taking it very seriously. It's, so I'm sorry, sorry to see this happen to you. But I, I do want to thank the police and the good work, the good work they always do as far as the desire to protect the people on the streets and keeping alcohol out of minors' hands. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Excellent comments. With that, Mrs. Moran, motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to suspend it, suspend the all-alcoholic license for Apothecary Ale Brewing Kitchen for three consecutive days and prior to August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. The proprietor is to notify the town administrator by four P M. Wednesday, July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five of the dates.
Second? Made by Mrs. Moran, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous. And Jim, thank you very much for your patience. And again, we're, we're sorry that this occurred. Again, you're a fine business establishment, you run a great, great shop there. And we know going forward to be, to be more cognizant, and so will your staff, I'm sure. And we appreciate your understanding. And we hope you never hear it before us again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dietz.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief thanks the officers and thank the officers and thank your volunteers.
I don't even know who they are.
That's good.
I know, I can get the information.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Let's see where we are here. I'll tell you what, let's give the trash and recycling update, then we'll continue public, public comment.
Since that might draw some comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am speaking on behalf of myself and the Public Works Director, who was with us a little bit earlier this evening online, but has since left the meeting. To be clear, for this week, the trash and recycling collection schedule is the normal schedule, beginning with the Monday trash and recycling routes today. Tuesday will be tomorrow, Wednesday on Wednesday, Thursday on Thursday, and Friday on Friday. We recognize that for some folks, the adjusted schedule last week might create a longer period of time where they're waiting for a collection. But as we stated in our public updates, we asked Republic to adjust the recycling collection schedule last week in order to account for missed collections on the Thursday and Friday recycling routes for two weeks in a row. And they, they, they agreed to do so. We have seen a significant improvement over the past few weeks in terms of the collection. So just by the numbers, we documented two thousand two hundred and fifty-three violations of our collection contract for the week ending July fourth. And then for the week after that, the week ending July eleventh, there were one thousand six hundred and fifty-four violations, so we did see some improvement. And then for last weekend, we saw significant improvement in the collection with the revised schedule, with a total of twenty-seven violations that were reported to us. So as we indicated in a public comment that the board and I released on Thursday, we have approached this as a closely monitoring Republic's performance, maintaining our contractual obligations and making sure that they can maintain their contractual obligations. And we do believe that our strong contract language has afforded us this improving level of service when compared to nearby communities that are struggling with service levels, in some cases, no recycling for multiple weeks. So we did have a, a drop-off again on Saturday for anything that was missed. It was fairly lightly attended, and there was a lot of reports of folks who just had extra trash, or maybe were concerned that they may not get picked up this weekend, this coming week, so they took advantage of it. But again, the schedule remains on the, on the regular Monday to Friday trash and recycling schedule for this week. The Public Works Department, myself, and the select board continue to monitor things with regards to Republic's performance here in town. And will certainly are prepared to take any and all action that's necessary in order to ensure the services are provided. But it does appear that our strategy over the past couple of weeks has been successful in terms of maintaining, seeing improving service, including through the course of last week. So that's the update for now. If there's any changes, we'll certainly push that information out. But the most important thing is, again, we are on our regular trash and recycling collection schedule this week. We encourage you, in order to put things curbside by six A M., because there are some days when they're getting here on the earlier side, to ensure that you're not missed for pickup. Thanks.
Again, I would just like to add a couple of comments that, again, over the last, since the first of July, there has been a significant amount of communication between the administration, myself, and the board. We have met two emergency sessions plus a couple of regular sessions to discuss the ongoing issue in relation to trash. We will continue to do so. Again, I want to acknowledge the flexibility on the part of the board members, making themselves available. Also, I'd like to recognize the administrator, town administrator, D P W director, D P W staff and administrative staff there, doing a terrific job as far as monitoring the activities, responding to the public's complaints. And again, we encourage people to, if your trash is not picked up, please call, please let us know, because it's important, and we want to ensure that we have the right numbers as far as, you know, the performance level of, of Republic. There has been significant improvement on Republic's part. And just to, again, reiterate what the administrator said, I think our strategy has been working favorably. And we'll continue on that right now. But again, we can change course as needed, and we'll continue to monitor it. So again, we appreciate everybody's effort, we appreciate the communication, and we'll continue to communicate to the public what's occurring in real time. So again, thank you for your patience and flexibility again. And again, this is somewhat beyond our control that we won't, our service provider wasn't providing service, so, but we'll hold them accountable. With that, all set. Public comment two. Mrs. Filmer?
I just, Pat Filmer, twenty-four, Field Chris Harris. And I just want to commend the Public Works Department for the output they've done through this whole trash mix-up. You drive through Reading, you drive through these other towns, or you get online and read about what's going on in other towns. And North Reading's Public Works and people involved in that have really come up to the top and helped us out between manning the D P W and getting the D P W trucks out there picking up. I want to commend them. Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Mackey, this is your shot. You're speechless.
I am.
All right, fantastic. All right, that's it for public comment. Now, let's, what do we got here? Public comment is done, trash recycling done. How about gifts from Veterans of Foreign Wars and others for Veterans Services Department? Mr. Gilberto, with the twelve.
One more. So I'm just gonna read from a letter signed by T J Tedeschi, Director of Veterans Services, to the V F W Post one zero eight seven four. To all who contribute through the V F W, on behalf of the North Reading Veterans Department and Veterans Events Committee, we wish to convey our sincere gratitude for your generous donation of six hundred dollars this spring. Private donations help to ensure that events, projects, and activities in North Reading give due respect to those who have served and continue to do so. The North Reading Veterans Department and Veteran Events Committee use this contribution toward the purchase of new U S flags for light posts on the town common, which will continue to be displayed seasonally until they are respectfully retired. It's also matched with eighty-five dollars that was given in other private donations as well, to undertake this work, which was coordinated by the Veterans Events Committee and the Veterans Department. It was also a contribution of the flag brackets, I believe, as well, which is not cash, it doesn't need to be accepted in order to be expended. It was an in-kind contribution that was made, which we greatly appreciate as well. So thank you.
Do you have a motion?
I just want to mention, I saw those flags driving to town the other day, it was pretty nice. It was really nice, it was a great, great donation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move, Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the amount of six hundred and eighty-five dollars as a gift for the North Reading Veterans Department and Veterans Event Committee from the Veterans of Foreign Wars and Others.
Sorry? Mr. Massey? Any further discussion? Although we appreciate the contributions and the donations and the support. Hearing done. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous. We'll do one more thing. Request for town owned land, board to sell town owned land, twenty-one Bliss Road. Mr. Gilberto?
We did receive a request after we were last before you for seeking authorization for this process to proceed for a party interested in purchasing twenty-one Bliss Road. And we have prepared a motion in order to align that parcel with the other parcels that are going through that process right now.
Mrs. Moran?
Mr. Chairman, I move to conduct an evaluation of the town's need for the following town-owned parcel, for which a request to purchase has been received in accordance with Pilo, Chapter five, Section twenty-five P, twenty-one Bliss Road.
Second? Further motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous. Let's go to Board Member Reports, and then all the new business. All right. Mr. Massey, you want to start us off?
Sure. Couple things, just want to touch upon T J Tedeschi leaving the Veterans, Veterans Department. Unfortunate to see him go. I understand it's a family issue, and I, I really hope everything's okay. He, he made a very large impact in a very short amount of time. I think, you know, if, if you really pay attention to what he did and how the veterans migrated towards him was, he really made a strong connection with them. Tried to get them out, field trips, different things, and I think that they were having a lot of fun with T J. So it's unfortunate to see him depart, but I wish him nothing but the best. Secondly, I just want to touch upon street signage. Reason being, something I brought up at town meeting, didn't really get the opportunity to present it to my board well enough, so a little bit more prepared. I just wanted to provide some updates in why we should consider it for next year. My opinion, new street signage in town is a token of architectural uniformity to a town that is considered affluent by other towns that drive through us. It is an inexpensive, in the grand scheme, item that can be immediately tangible of where your tax dollars are going. We have street signage missing, and we have four to five different versions of street signs out there. It doesn't look good. Some streets already have the new signage, which would save us costs, of course. The D P W operational budget would be taking care of this task for installation, and we can allow them, obviously, up to two years to complete the task. This is not something that just because it's a fiscal year X, it doesn't have to be installed in fiscal year X. It's more so a procurement of the signs that would be done that year. There was a concern mentioned at town meeting about safety. I was a little taken back by the questioning, how can bigger and brighter signage be less safe? But regardless, I have since confirmed and running with both the chiefs of fire and police, and both have no concerns, and believe it is a good idea to have in town. Also creates better wayfinding in town. At the end of the day, this was multiple senior citizens that have brought this to my attention. And at the end of the day, at town meeting, any resident has the right to come forward and make any proposed amendments on the floor to any article. So I personally believe that this board may have just voted no because of the process in which I did it, but I actually think at the end of the day, they think it's a good idea. So thank you.
Mrs. Moran?
Uh, may I, may I make a comment on this sort?
Sure.
I, I don't disagree in principle that having new signs would be great. I think in view of the presentation we just heard from the Senior Center, I, if we had...
You're not gonna, you're not gonna commingle operations, are you? You're not gonna commingle operational budget with capital improvement budget, are you?
I mean, to, we can buy all the signs in fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Nah, I don't.
And then we have to install them in fiscal year twenty-six? Or we can spread it over two years? Because I think once it's purchased, then the fiscal year has to be delivered in the fiscal year. And I don't know if it has to be installed or not. I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea. I just, if we have money in the budget to roll it into, I think we should.
I, I think that, I think that operational expenses and capital improvement expenses are, are two different buckets, but that's okay. We'll learn on the town.
Well, they are different buckets, but like, we have a finite amount of money altogether.
I think, I think the appropriate discussion should take place, you know, during the, and again, the budgetary season starts early. But capital projects will be due in fall, in the fall.
Yeah.
November, October, even. October, November, you know, so.
I think we should put it up for the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, at that point, we'll put it up for discussion, and again, put it up for the Capital Improvement Plan and Committee, if that's where it should be going, depending upon the dollar amount to be expended. Put it up for the discussion.
Just a recommendation to my board and to the community.
Yeah, oh, okay, very good. Mrs. Moran, all little business, um, committee reports?
So for new business, the Community Action National Nights Out is coming up. It's August fifth, the rain date is August twelfth. It's going to be in the I R P. Different departments looking for volunteers, so I think that would be an item to, for the board members to consider, and if you're available to attend. I think several different town departments will have tables and signage. I think it would be important for us to be there in support of the town.
And free hamburgers.
I'm sorry?
And free hamburgers.
Well, the Fire Department supposedly will be doing the cooking.
What is that?
Um, August fifth, rain date is August twelfth.
And it's what, five thirty to seven thirty? Tuesday, five thirty to seven thirty.
Five thirty to seven thirty, there.
Yeah, it's, it's great informational session for, for people. Tables be set up for the town departments. It's good for the public, come out, get the kids out there, there's gonna be things for the kids to do.
The Senior Center is planning to do a walk around the track in the I R P. I think it'll be great. Hopefully, it's not like hot and humid and, I mean, there's no suits. Wear comfortable shoes.
Yeah.
I've been told to do that.
Similar to the Hoxton Ricks barbecue.
Right. Not town, not North Reading Town Day, separate.
That's separate.
Our barbecue is a separate, we'd like to see some of you guys out there, too.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Our own table. Is it September?
Is it August fifth?
August fifth, but if it's raining, it's August twelfth. Put it in the calendar.
And then, the reports, are all the new business?
I don't have any new business.
All new business, okay. Mr. Wong?
I'm good.
You're good. Mr. Studo.
So, this past month, as people are aware, there was the first public hearing for the 20 Elm, Street 40B project. There'll be another one on August 7th at 6:00. I do just wanna clarify one point. The developer, from a timeline perspective, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gilberto, but the clock started, we'll start as of when we got the presentation at the end of July, are you gonna go August? That nine-month clock?
It's a six-month clock, and it will begin when we receive the application, which has not happened yet.
Not happened yet, so, but also, one thing to clarify, and I think there was a little bit of just confusion. There, at this point, it is an application that has been approved by the state on several levels, and it is the ZBAs to make sure, you know, that they're following all the rules that you should, that you can't circumvent through the process, for lack of a better way to put it. However, I do wanna be clear that the town, this is not something, because just a little chatter has gone towards that, the town does not get to vote on whether or not this happens. I mean, at this point, it's just a matter of, can we make it as friendly as possible to North Reading, for lack of a better way to put it? Because I just think, I don't want the expectation to be that six months from now, there is a, what do they call it when the ZBA, whatever, however the ZBA does their approval, and everybody's like, well, no, where was the public hearing notice about a vote? And that there is no vote, okay? I just wanna make that clear, because I think it just, it's already getting confusing, and this is, it's a big project, and I think that's the thing that's confusing for those that, because so much has happened since then, right? I mean, with COVID, with everything else, that this is something that around the corner was not a what-if, it is just a when, and now the when is coming. And again, we expect the application, though, probably the next, before the next, yeah, before the August 7th, so if everyone went, if everything went with the timeline, I mean, so February is where the ZBA would have to give a decision, plus or minus? Okay, so, but August 7th comes, it's an important thing. I actually expected more people there than we had, I was kinda surprised, considering the first time around, you know, we couldn't, I mean, they're standing room only, so, but it's important to understand that they, they're given the opportunity to speak, I don't know how much move there is, because again, it's in front of the ZBA and the developer, but if there's something you really feel strong about, that, I mean, go, go there, because as much as we'd love to hear it, which we will, it's not, it's not gonna do much in this room, not for this particular thing. So, that's all I have to throw there.
Mr. Massie? Sorry, just confirming, that's just another hearing, same place, same spot?
Yeah, so, that's the, they'll probably do at least one, one a month, right, for something this big?
It all depends on how the process, again, the process works, you know, through the zoning board of appeals, they are the ultimate decision-maker, as far as what they approve or disapprove. Again, it's not a town meeting vote, it's not a select board vote, it's just the zoning board of appeals. The applicant has put in an application with a plan, and they either approve through the plan, you know, as submitted by the applicant, you know, or there are modifications which are agreed to by the applicant through the public hearing process. Again, the public is allowed to have input, as you know, they need more screening, we want the building shorter, we want this, that, the other, the traffic's gonna be terrible and all the rest. It all gets taken into consideration, but then, in the end, the zoning board of appeal has one of two choices, they either approve something, again, it's either what the developer has submitted, or some hybrid of that, which they've agreed to during the hearings process, you know, or something less. And then again, there's an appeal process for the applicant, if they're not satisfied with what the zoning board of appeals has approved, well, the zoning board of appeals can just outright reject it, and then they appeal to the state, and the outcome of that is that something will be built with little or no input from the town of North Reading. So, it depends upon how friendly the applicant is at this particular stage of the game, how much they're willing to work with the town, to get something to mitigate the impact as much as possible, it's not just the traffic impact, but the, you know, the visibility of it to the neighborhood and everything else, if they're willing to work with the zoning board of appeals through this process, when they come to some agreement, and that's when it's approved. If the zoning board of appeals and the developer can't come to an agreement, the developer and the state will decide what we get. And that's the way the process works, it'll be late. ZBA has six months to come to some conclusion, once the plans have been submitted, the clock starts ticking, and then we take it from there. But it still is important for people to appear, register their concerns, and any suggestions they may have to help mitigate the impact. But appear, you know, at this point, that there is a development that is coming, which will be approved, either by the local zoning board of appeals or the state. But it's still important to be heard.
That's it?
Was there a lot of comments during the last meeting?
Oh, there were a lot of comments, just, unfortunately, they're not, and I'll elaborate on that, I'll answer that, so, the comments were good comments, but again, they were comments that would have had a lot more meaning for a project that has not been approved yet, right, that could not be approved, I mean, that, that people could say, okay, I heard so-and-so say this, all right, it doesn't matter. I mean, a lot of the commentary made sense to me and other people in that room, but, I mean, you disagreeing, for example, right, the traffic, you disagreeing with the study that Tremble Company had, it's not gonna sway the state to say, well, I disagree with this professional study, it's gonna be like, whoa, all right, congratulations, like, and those are the, so those are the comments, but there were a lot, but there were a lot of the, pretty much the same comments from August 2019, but I felt like they meant more in August 2019, because we had just started, and it was, it was a very different atmosphere, totally, so, but there were, I mean, it was a good amount, what would you say, maybe like 20, 25, I mean, unique visitors?
Yeah, yeah.
To the podium? I say unique visitor, just one guy came up six times.
And again, the applicant's proposal is online right now?
There is a presentation, yeah.
Public, the presentation that they made at the zoning board of appeals hearing is online on the town website, people can take a look at and prepare for the next meeting, which again is?
The 7th.
The 7th, at 6:00 PM, right? Okay. So, all set? I have a couple of things. First of all, we will be dealing with an issue as far as the closing of Perry Park down here on Main Street, the Mobile Home Park. The Mobile Home Rent Control Board has been, has had two hearings thus far with the petitioner in relation to, you know, his desire to discontinue the use of it as a Mobile Home Trail Park, and then he's also proposing a 40B for the area, not that there's any application before us, but we're, I think, 111 units, that he's proposing here, 25%, which would be affordable.
He is.
This is what he's putting forth for consideration.
Oh, that's awesome.
However, he has not put in any formal application with the board, with anybody at this particular point, but this is what his plan is. The Mobile Home Rent Control Board has been doing a fantastic job in relation to garnering as much information as possible from the applicant, and input from the residents who live there, and there's been a significant amount of dialogue back and forth. What the Mobile Home Rent Control Board did at their last meeting was they asked the owner of the property, enhance their communication with the residents down there, and make it quite clear as to exactly what those residents can expect in relation to being bought out, being able to move their units, it's a two-year notice that has to be given, and it wasn't clear that that communication was actually taking place, and the Mobile Home Rent Control Board asked the applicant to continue the hearing until that communication took place, so there would be some certainty on the part of those residents as to what's gonna happen to them, what are they gonna have for resources to move. The gentleman who owns the property has also, as part of his plan, should his development be approved, offer to house some of those residents, once it's built, at a reduced rate over a period of time. Again, it's important for him to communicate that to them, and then we can get some more feedback from the residents as to what the impact really is. Once the Mobile Home Rent Control Board concludes their hearing, they have a certain number of days, 21 days, to put together a report and recommendation to this board. The ultimate determination for discontinuance of the use of the property as a Mobile Home Park lies with this board, out of the zoning, out of the bylaws that we have. So, it's ultimately gonna end up here, and I just wanna put everybody with that it's coming down, so the next Mobile Home Rent Control Board meeting is August 21st. So, at that particular point in time, between the last meeting that they had and August 21st, hopefully, there was a significant amount of communication between the owner of the property and the owners of the Mobile Homes there. And then, once the public input is done, and the hearing is closed, the Mobile Home Rent Control Board will deliberate among themselves and issue a final report and recommendation to this board, at which time, we would then have to schedule a hearing with the developer, with the owner of the property, and we make the final determination. So, again, I wanna stress again that they've done a terrific job as far as cleaning information, pulling information out, so that we'll have more information to make an informed decision, the people will, they will have some certainty as to really what they're facing, because it was unclear, mixed messaging, so. The petitioner, again, to his credit, is willing to work with these people and enhance the communication, hopefully, they come to some conclusion that they all agree on something, you know, that at least they've been communicated with, they don't necessarily have to like it or agree with it, but at least they can't say that they weren't informed. So, that'll be coming up, I would expect, within six weeks, you know, six to eight weeks.
So, I have a question, because this was early on, I just didn't tell them what a year, but if you can say you're gonna, the first step, though, to even propose a 40B is to get an initial concept approved at the state, correct?
Yeah, and that hasn't taken place. So, again, this is conceptually...
Is there notification necessary, like, does he, like, meaning, he goes to the state, so let's say he just had a plan, does the town get informed by the state or him, or can he do this under the cover of documents and just come and, by the way, I've been working at this at the state level?
Well, he isn't doing it under the cover of documents, right?
No, no.
So, it's, you know, he's stating this is what his intentions are, but again, that process takes years, as we well know. So, and again, whether, he is not bound by what he is conceptually saying he wants to do. He's telling us what he wants to do and what his plan is, but those plans can change. And again, we don't necessarily, he's looking to have some sort of quid pro quo, you know, he'll agree to do this if we agree to do that, and I didn't say anything through four-fifths of two meetings, until the end of the last meeting, when I just said, you know, let me just tell you as one member of the board, first of all, I don't like quid pro quo, secondly, I don't like the fact that you need, you know, these people need some certainty as to what you're offering them, and then, you know, we don't know if you're planning, and we're not gonna tie a 40B approved for this to the discontinuance of that, because, you know, so that, basically, he's just come here asking, he wants to discontinue the use, and what he's promising to do, again, there's nothing, you can't, either we're gonna approve the discontinuance or we are not, and there won't be any strings attached, you know? But dialogue and discussion can take place between the applicant and ourselves as progressives, which I would expect to happen.
One follow-up, maybe, you may know this, Mr. Gilberto, if, on the other 40B, does the time that the town is actually in safe harbor, is it when it is approved or construction complete? Meaning, let's say, early next year, this... We already know this, right, but let's say by next summer, this has been approved, it's approved, that's it, you can go, does that, does that now trigger safe harbor? Meaning, let's say, I'm just giving phantom dates, May 2025, there's a six, there's a formal approval for the 20 Elm 40B, then this guy comes out of left field in September, because we have that formally approved, and now we're technically would be in safe harbor, can we claim safe harbor and deny a 40B?
Short answer is yes, but that doesn't preclude us from doing friendly 40Bs and providing additional affordable housing above the 10% mandated threshold.
If it's an unfriendly one.
But, I mean, so...
That's what I'm trying to say, though, at what, at what point does this one here, which we know is gonna go through, give us the ability to say no to unfriendly 40Bs?
So, I believe there need to be building permits issued, so it needs to be further along than just permitting approved, but there's actually building permits out there for the units.
Like, for some, something, foundation, something?
A building permit, yeah.
But any, like, right, there's a foundation permit first, is that how it works?
I believe it could be, you know, for a building with a certain number of units that would then count on the SHI, I have to talk further with the town planner exactly how that would work, but that's my understanding.
My intent is, you know, as we get closer to the discussion and the hearing on this discontinuance application, we'll get more firm advice from council as to really what the parameters can and should be associated with. My understanding is, right now, it's either you're gonna allow it, or it's in discontinued, or you're not, without any strings attached, so. But we'll get more clarification as it comes closer, but again, they've done a fantastic job, again, with the assistance of Little Hartman, who's been coordinating all the efforts there. It is, it's very interesting, and it's been fruitful, and it's gonna end up an update, very shortly, so I just figured I'd let everybody know that. Additionally, the Hillview and the town administrator have notified Ultra Sheek of a discontinuance of the license agreement, I believe it's by April, but I know the commission is in discussions with, with the people who are operating there, that they have some functions that are beyond that April date, and they're gonna be working with them to make sure that nobody is harmed in relation to that, so sometime, probably, you know, later in the spring or summertime, before they actually vacate the property. But the formal notification has taken place, letters been sent, and discussions are ongoing, and Hillview's working with them and work through some of the occasions that they've booked, or events that they've booked. Other than that, just wanna mention the fact, and I know the town administrator's gonna edit this report, but we had a retirement on the police department, Sergeant Paul Dorsey, retired after approximately 30 years with the department, and followed in the footsteps of his father, who was also a sergeant of the police department for him, and he actually got to serve with him early on in his career. But young Mr. Dorsey, what was his effective date, July?
July 1.
July 1, and after 30 years of service at the town, we wish him and his family well, and his retirement, and a long and healthy retirement. Always a great police officer, getting moved up through the ranks, and all sorts of positions within the department, including detective, and all the rest, so, did a great job, he's a great public servant, and we appreciate just 30 years of service to the community, wish him nothing but good health and a long, happy retirement. With that, I'm all set. So. Next, I believe, that takes care of the front page. North Reading Administrative Staff vote to approve and sign the integrated agreement. Mr. Gilberto?
This agenda item and the next are both for approval of an integrated agreement, or we are simply taking previously agreed-to and funded memorandums of agreement and integrating the language into a larger contract, we are not providing any additional years on the collective bargaining agreement, nor is this providing any wage or benefit increases. Thank you.
Mrs. Moran.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify and sign the integrated agreement based on the party's prior memorandum of agreement and contract between the town of North Reading and the North Reading Administrative Staffs for the period of time beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2027.
Second? Second, was that Mr. Massie?
Mr. Massie.
Any further discussion? Here we go, now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous. We've got, approve and sign the integrated agreement of the North Reading Library staff. Mrs. Moran. Mrs. Moran?
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify and sign the integrated agreement based on the party's prior memorandum of agreement and contract between the town of North Reading and the North Reading Reading Library Staff Association, Local four-nine-two-eight. I'm LSA, A F T Massachusetts, A F L C I O for the period of time beginning July first, twenty-twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven.
Second? Second by Mr. Massey. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Just want to, just want to, just want to give kudos to Mr. Gilberto and Chenzo, Bob Collins, for some negotiations with the library staff. Good team efforts. I appreciate your time.
Great job. And it's nice to have integrated agreements, so that when we move on to the next one, it's all on one page. With that, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous. Next order of business, appoint a town council. Mr. Gilberto, I had the town administrator do some research and comparison contrasting as far as cost of services. We have been served by a couple hundred pages, I don't know how many years now.
Thirty.
Close to twenty-five to thirty years of service from K P Law. They've served us well. Their rates appear to be still reasonable and fine, and it is incumbent upon us on an annual basis to appoint town council. So now is the time to do it. With that, I'll accept the motion. Motion there?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint K P Law's town council for the town of North Reading for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Second? Second by Mr. Massey. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just want to, I brought this up last year, I will bring it up again. I think it is in North Reading's best interest to put these, I'm not going to say out of bid, but requesting for services. I do think it is in North Reading's best interest to see what's out there, what's in the market, and who else is there in the market as well. I don't disagree as of, certainly as of recent, that town council does a great job, from my experience. That's, it's not to diminish that at all. I just think that I'm constantly always thinking of competitive nature for what is best and kind of what we can get out of it. But, so that would be my recommendation. Sure, it'll go down four to one, but I'm just getting it on the record.
I just think it's important for people to recognize, again, K P Law has been serving our community, both as a general council and labor council, probably close to thirty years. And again, relatively competitive in their rates. They have a stable of fifty-two attorneys, who are all municipal attorneys. They represent one hundred and thirty-seven communities, whether the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, about half of that number is in the same capacity as they are for the town of North Reading, which is both general council and labor council. They represent, again, the other half of them, they're either just general council or labor council or special council. So, you know, when we have any issues that we need to deal with, get a stable of fifty-two attorneys that represent one hundred and thirty-seven other communities. The economies of scale and the ability to render opinions and good opinions on a fast track and on a less research needing to be done, I think has served us well over the years. And again, I have been here for a long time, but we've had three or four other councils that we've had. We've even had in-house council here during my terms. This by far has been the best deal that we've been able to have for a long period of time, and I think we should continue the service of K P Law. I wholeheartedly endorse.
I just, I just want to mention, I think it's worth noting that there's a lot of critical and upcoming issues to North Reading that have to do with legal operations. And I think it is, at least in my eyes, that keep an eye on some of, some of these things. For example, I understand the M B T A went forward, waiting to hear if the state accepts that or not, but obviously, that is clearly something that K P Law signed off on, so we just want to make sure that goes through as is. And if as is, then I think that they did good work. If not, then I think we need to consider other options, because obviously, we go in front of the people of the town, we don't want to come in off of a legal counsel advisory. And if that advisory doesn't come true, I think it's something that we should consider. Thank you.
And again, not to mention, we have other cases already pending, but we don't want to necessarily switch horses midstream either. But, that being said, all things being equal, they are competitive with their rates, but they have by far one of the largest municipal law firms in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and resources at their fingertips that other people, other firms are not capable of doing so. But that is, any further discussion upon the town council? On the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, unanimous. Thank you. With that, legal bills.
How timely.
Legal bills, yeah. Mrs. Moran?
Legal bills. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for the K P Law for the month of May in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents as follows. General eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-six cents, and labor forty-nine dollars even, for a total of eighteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second? Second by Mr. Massey. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous. Legal bills, again. Mrs. Moran?
Waiting as fast as I can, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for K P Law for the month of June in the amount of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars as follows. General twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Labor hundred and forty-seven dollars even, for a total of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second? Second by Mr. Massey. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous. Another legal bill, American Arbitration Association.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for American Arbitration Association in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars as follow. Labor three hundred and seventy-five dollars even.
Second? So made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Yeah, just curious, what is the American Arbitration Association? This is obviously a new one I've never seen.
It comes up when someone files action, some labor union will file an action for arbitration. Doesn't mean it's always going to go to arbitration, just as a shot across the bow. And then, if it materializes anymore, you'll be well aware.
Okay. Yeah, mostly it's for union negotiation, right?
Well, negotiations have taken place, there may be an issue that's coming up as far as contractually agreed upon, there's a disagreement, and so they file for arbitration, file the grievances, wasn't approved, so now they go to arbitration. So, once it materializes, we'll be in the loop.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous. Good, I think we have two minutes.
Any chance we can loop these all into one motion? Just for the ease of, it's up to you.
Second.
Only that there may be some for which people need to abstain or wish to abstain, but not-
I got to abstain for the fifteenth, because I wasn't there. No, that's a great idea.
Sixteenth, I do have that. All right, Mrs. Moran, don't mumble, bring it faster.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the meeting of June second, twenty-twenty-five.
Second? Second by Mr. Massey. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Second? Second by Mr. Massey. Any discussion? The chair will be abstaining. I was out of the country on the sixteenth, so I'll be abstaining. On the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any more abstention?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the July third, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Second? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the July tenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Second? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Abstain.
Those opposed, what, what abstention, Mr. Studo? Okay. Whatever we-
Oh, no, that was July tenth.
No, fifteenth, that was the-
That was the tenth, that was the tenth.
That was, this was the tenth.
Oh, I'm already one ahead. Aye.
That was the ten, so that was unanimous. That was unanimous.
Unanimous, I was there on the tenth.
Yes, that was unanimous.
I missed one, didn't I?
No, that was the tenth.
You missed the tenth.
I missed the tenth.
I know July fifteenth. Did you do the fifteenth or the tenth just then?
This is the tenth.
Right, so now you're doing the fifteenth.
No, I know, but I missed the tenth.
It is the tenth. All right.
I think-
It is the tenth.
Yeah.
You were here, I was-
I was, she wasn't there, I was here.
Was that motion for the tenth that you had?
It's spirit.
This was for the tenth.
Yes, that was on the tenth. So we voted on the tenth, it's unanimous. You're now going to make the motion for the fifteenth. Does she abstain from the tenth? No, 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 that was a mistake. He thought he was voting on the fifteenth.
No, but she did abstain from the tenth.
I abstained from the tenth. I was not here for the tenth, he was not here for the fifteenth.
All right, I'm sorry.
And it's only ten twelve.
You're way ahead of me. You've got to slow down.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minute, the regular session minutes for the July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Second? Motion made and seconded by Mr. Massey. Any discussion? Although Mr. Studo will be abstaining. No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any abstention, Mr. Studo?
That's it.
Now, Mr. Town Administrator's brief report, it's only about eight pages long.
Seventeen items for this evening. A lot been going on, believe it or not, trash is not the only thing that's been happening here in town. First, I did submit a copy of the letter that the board approved at the June meeting relative to seventy-three Lowell Road. You see that they responded back to saying that given the known wetlands and the lack of municipal sewer infrastructure, they've concluded that the property at seventy-three Lowell Road is not viable to redevelop for housing. So they did certainly, I think, take our feedback, receive it, and recognize the challenges. Second, regarding the Flint Memorial Library, there's been a number of challenges in the building this summer. Both the H V A C issue and then elevator issues that developed at the end of June. D P W is issuing an invitation for bids for an H V A C replacement project, the extent of which will be determined by the responses and the budget. Our hope is that if there is a shortfall, additional funds could be requested at October town meeting. There is an update regarding the elevators and how library services can be accessed. The library is out of service, all floors of the library are open. D P W is seeking to restore elevator service, but for the time being, library staff has implemented measures to help minimize inconvenience which are available on the town and on the library website. I will just note that there is a community service opportunity, if there's anybody who's seeking to volunteer time, one to two hours per day to help transport books between floors, so that we can keep the facility open while the D P W works to restore service. It's greatly appreciated. Can visit the library to sign up, or you can call the library at six-six-four, four-nine-four-two. I will say that we learned today from an engineer that a minimum, at a minimum, the elevator cylinder must be replaced, which is a project that would cost likely in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. It may make some sense for us to update other components of that thirty-year-old piece of equipment at the same time. So there will be more to come, but the solution is not going to be immediate, and we feel important to let the public know and to, you know, caution that we're working as best we can to try to proceed with the project, but it is expensive and there may be some design that's involved as well. Third, town hall and our associated contractors on the middle high school project have been providing information to the M S B A since the settlement of litigation a couple of years ago. On June twenty-third, I was informed that M S B A has received all of the information it was seeking from us and is now preparing us for a final audit. They will inform us as soon as a target board of directors meeting for a final audit can be finalized to eventually close out the project. There will be town meeting action that will be required in October with regard to short-term borrowing on the project. Fourth, the final supplemental state budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five included the following earmarks. One was a hundred thousand dollars for computer device replacement at North Reading Public Schools. Second was for North Reading capital improvements to facilitate full-day kindergarten for a hundred thousand dollars. And then the third was language that would require the Mass Bay Transportation Authority to provide ride services to the town of North Reading. This is something that we'll be working with the M B T A on moving forward, and there'll be a more formal announcement of any details once that's in place. So the service is not in place right now, but there is language in state law that does now require for this, this service to be expanded. So it's a huge step in the right direction, and we'll be working with the M B T A on that. The town does have the opportunity to pursue an extension of its twenty-twenty open space and recreation plan using technical assistance from M A P C. We would do this in lieu of creating a new plan in twenty-twenty-seven. We could make interim updates with, and that technical assistance, and extend the plan to twenty-thirty at no cost to the town. Based on the recommendation of Parks and Recreation, our intention is to proceed with this extension. The project was discussed with the C P C, and they're in favor of taking advantage of the extension. Both the Planning Commission and the Select Board are asked for a letter of endorsement of the plans. The boards will be given the opportunity to review them, review the updates prior to the plan being finalized. There is a deadline, it's September thirtieth, so it'll be coming back before the board soon. I'll pass over number six on the Hillview, earlier we spoke to that. Number seven, the application for three A in M B T A community compliance was submitted to the State Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities on June twenty-fifth, and it's been confirmed and received. It's now under review by the state. There is no timeline provided for when we should expect to receive the results of the review. However, many communities have reported long wait times to receive confirmation of compliance after submitting their application, in some cases in excess of a year. I'm going to skip over Twenty Elm Street, Mr. Studo spoke to that. We did project a deficit for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five legal bills, and on July ninth, the Finance Committee approved a reserve fund transfer of eighty-eight thousand dollars to address the shortfall. I will note that we increased the legal budget significantly last year to, I believe, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And we hope that we will not see that challenge next year, for this current year. As a result of the retirement of Sergeant Dorsey, we sworn in a new police officer, Alexandra Sinjak, and promoted a patrolman to Sergeant Joseph Aliyoe. We congratulate both men. There was a comment made with regard to the resignation of the Director of Veteran Services. His last day will be August fifth, and we wish him well, thank him for everything he's done over the past year. Some of you are aware that Youth Services Director Eleanor Richard departed employment with the town in mid-June. She's returning to Montserrat College of Art where she previously worked. We wish Eleanor well, and we are advertising the vacancy. New federal flood insurance rate maps took effect July eighth. Conservation and planning have conducted extensive outreach mailing to approximately one thousand homeowners, a notice that their property is either coming into the flood zone, being removed from the flood zone, or that the boundary is moving within their property. We did receive a notice from the Attorney General that they completed review of bylaw changes that were approved at January special town meeting. There are a few clarifications that are required for the floodplain bylaw, which I expect to be submitted by the Planning Commission for action at October town meeting. We're almost there. The traffic signal lights at Havel and Chestnut Street intersection have been tested over the past few weeks. Couple of issues have arisen, including with the activation of the public safety mode, the orientation of the second set of lights on the southbound side of Havel Street, and the system defaulting to the flash mode, which happened over the weekend. The town's engineer for the project, the contractor, and the D P W are reviewing the operation of lights for potential adjustments. We believe that electric light, the contractor, will be back out as soon as tomorrow and hope that we can address things so that it's restored, so that the lights are brought to permanent service. I'd like to provide three important updates relative to bridge projects in town. First, Park Street Bridge, it's been demolished and the utilities have been capped and relocated. Contractor has begun rebar installation at the bridge. Reopening is not projected for August. The contract end date is October fifteenth. I'm pleased to report the town did receive a five hundred thousand dollar small bridge grant from the state, which we are working to ensure we can maximize access to the funds for the project, which has, as everybody knows, already started. Chestnut Street Bridge utility work is nearly complete, with National Grid still needing to complete temporary gas bypass. Precast concrete materials are in production. Reopening is projected for the fall, and contract end date for that project is currently October fifteenth. Finally, the bridge at Borough's Road saw another sinkhole, which was repaired by the D P W. The required hydrologic study for replacement of the bridge is underway. However, based on the most recent sinkhole, D P W will now be evaluating other options for a short-term repair at this location. Finally, we released an update with regard to water earlier in the year. I'm going to read from it. Finally, we released an update with regard to water earlier in the year, I'm gonna read from it, we've kind of added to it too. D P W is aware of a recent increase in instances of brown or discolored water. It's most often caused by seasonal increases in water usage associated with lawn watering, pools, and other outdoor activities. This summer brought many days of hot weather, which further exacerbates these conditions. In addition, as has been discussed and reported, the town's water supplier, the town of Andover, is similarly experiencing discoloration and has initiated a multi-year plan to address the problem in Andover. North Reading has already made over six million dollars in water main and related improvements in recent years, and continues to make annual improvements to the distribution system. Additionally, D P W is flushing areas of town where discolored water has been reported. Water is tested daily at North Reading and continues to meet federal and state standards. Residents are urged to report brown or discolored water to D P W by calling nine seven eight, three five seven, five two six zero, and they're advised to run an outside faucet to flush any discolored water from their home. Additionally, D P W is contracting for an updated water master plan, which can identify other steps to reduce brown and or discolored water in our system. We'll be meeting with Andover to discuss their water system improvement plans and any potential impacts on North Reading. Finally, in addition to on-demand flushing that D P W is currently conducting in response to brown or discolored water calls, D P W is also exploring an early-season flushing program for next year to hopefully mitigate the impacts. So I know that was a lot, thank you for your, all your attention, appreciate it.
That was fine, that was enough.
Thank you, Mike.
Poor D P Ws, just, they, they, they're really busy.
D P W's busy people, all the around. All right, with that, we have one more motion.
No more discussion?
If you'd like.
No.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second by Mr. Massey.
It's ten twenty-three.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, unanimous. Thank you, thank you.